Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi. Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
It's El-Sawafi, Councilmember Herrick, and Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, at, uh, wait, that's, okay, I'm sorry, it's at my turn. Yeah, this time we'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Robert Abraham.
Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce our dear friend Pastor Dan from the Guardian Lutheran Church, who will give the invocation for tonight's meeting. We'd ask everybody that is able to please stand for our invocation, and when we're finished, remain standing for our country's Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks for letting me be here. We had sunlight today. What a great thing in Michigan. So, a couple verses from Psalm 27. "The Lord is my light and my salvation; whom shall I fear? The Lord is the stronghold of my life; of whom shall I be afraid?" And then the end, couple verses. "I believe that I shall look upon the goodness of the Lord in the land of the living. Wait for the Lord; be strong, and let your heart take courage. Wait for the Lord." And we pray, Heavenly Father, we just thank you for all your blessings, and we pray your blessings and guidance on all of us here in Dearborn. For our mayor and our council members, our first responders, policemen, firemen, businessmen, families, residents, may you continue to bless us and guide us, and may tonight's meeting go according to your will and for the good of all people. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
.....................................................................
Thank you, Father, appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we, can we have the first item of business?
Yes, the first item is item number four, which is our public comment section.
All right, thank you. At this time, the council has entertained public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and we had some comment cards filled out. If you do not have one, please try to fill one out. It should be right here on the right. If not, at the end, we will just make a clean sweep to see if anybody's here. So first, we have Jack Tate. Just a friendly reminder, there is a three-minute time limitation.
Council President, numbers of council, I don't think I've ever taken three minutes.
No, not you.
I have two short announcements I want to make. Uh, number one is our monthly lecture series at the museum on February 1st at 7:00 is on the Lincoln Motor Company, both before Ford bought it and after. Should be quite interesting, and looking forward to seeing a lot of people show up for that one. Secondly, Dearborn Preservation is having a lecture on the restoration of Clara and Henry's house, Fairlane, on February 6th at 7:00, and that's again at the Ross House, both of them. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Jack. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right, so next, we have Ali Fadallah.
My name is Khalid Al-Falah Al-Sabab, by the name of Khalid Lee by Goodrich. I'm here tonight to tell you about the traumatic treatment I have experienced in my tenure here in Dearborn. I'm a 48-year-old Lebanese French-American gay man living in Dearborn. Recently, I was 17.23 while leaving Corvina East Dearborn. A young man was right the other day. A police report may never seen however, the officer said he can't issue a ticket to a young man that I believe tried to harm me. Nonetheless, the officer said he has to see it happen for him to issue a ticket. The young man admitted responsibility. There are cameras, and my statement, so what's the problem with those facts? I filed a citizen's complaint form, and it's going through its chain of commands as I speak. I believe, uh, now, if this was one consolidated accident, I would not be severely upset and traumatized, but this type of situation has happened many, many times in different situations, but all are traumatizing situations. I have always complained about those other mistreatments, but no one does anything about it. Years ago, I was fired from my position as a Dearborn Public's Two School teacher on false allegations and pretenses when it was really because I was, I am gay and disabled. Another very traumatic situation happened pre-pandemic on December 19th, when I was forced to use self-defense against Fairlane Mall security employees because they were not taking an employee, Fairlane Mall security employees, because they were not taking my claim of harassment seriously and perpetuating the same harassment I have always faced. That situation ended up in a physical fight between me and security and employees. My doctor labeled the situation as disassociation blackout, which means long-term abuse leads to a self-defense mechanism mode where you see yourself fighting, but you're not in control. The blackout occurred when someone got hit, so I didn't see the punch. I heard it, and it was really loud. The blackout has the traumatic scene, so you forget. That case went to court through Judge Hunt, and the case was dismissed. They never came to court. I have almost been hit by a car three times. My house and car have been ag- people call me fag. This type of abuse needs to stop, or this situation will lead to another disassociation blackout. Who is supposed to take this seriously and investigate the truth of this situation?
You, Mr. Hamud?
City Council, Chief Sheehan? I don't know. But I know someone needs to investigate the truth, or this will keep happening, and it will turn into a very dangerous situation. I received a letter from Social Security Disability that states there are more traumatic experiences that I've blocked out of memory, and I believe those traumatic experiences happened in Dearborn, but it, but my memory has showed me, showed me brief recollections of what happened, and they are really severe. I remember going into a seizure-like state and seeing blood and white phlegm come out of my mouth. Police officers have admitted to me that they know me from times I used to complain to them about the abuse, but I don't remember. You all have to guide me.
You have 30 seconds?
You all have to, you all have to take this situation seriously and guide me to resolution. I'm calling on a judicial review of this issue. A judicial review requires a full truthful review of the facts. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Fadallah. Uh, next, we have Mr. Hassan Owen.
Hey, Hassan, I just want to tell you, sorry, sir, about what's happened to you. I got the same situation, so we're gonna listen to this right here.
I asked if the officer wrote for location. He said no.
I believe, I believe it's just a phone call. So the officer took all the information, submitted it to the Wayne County Prosecutor, for the prosecutor to determine if it warranted criminal charges.
Okay.
You guys know about that, right? That's number one. Number two.
It's a policy in Dearborn. You are not allowed to take reports over the phone. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Wow.
I sent you the video. You didn't even respond back to me.
Oh, you're talking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Owen.
No, 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 this, this is the body. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just tell you.
Okay, Mr. Owen, let me tell you, hold on, let me tell you right now. We're not doing this.
We're not doing nothing.
Listen to me. I'm gonna tell you, so I'm gonna have you removed.
Please.
No, you're gonna listen to me, and I'm gonna talk, and you ask me a question. I'm gonna answer, and then you're gonna get your three minutes, and that's gonna be the end of it.
Okay.
You sent me some stuff, information, which I did review. So you're asking me that, yes, I did review that. So now, you have some questions regarding it. I want you to make sure that you answer your questions specifically, so we can answer them and be done. Go ahead.
You guys let a police officer sit there and make a phone call on the report, and it's, you can't do it. It's against police policy. Why did that happen?
Okay.
I just wanna know, why did that?
Okay, I got that down.
Who gave, who gave, hold on.
I have that down.
Don't interrupt my three minutes, please. Who is the person that authorized the phone call to be made to Osama Sablani to get a, a, a police report from him? I just wanna know who authorized it.
Okay, Mr. Owen, so to answer that question regarding police policy, that's handled internally with the Police Department?
Understandable. Who pays the Police Department?
Let me finish, let me finish my statement.
The city pays the Police Department. Your body.
Mr. Owen, Mr. Owen, this is not gonna go down like that.
How's it gonna go down? You just don't wanna face reality.
You're gonna let me finish. You're asking me a question about police policy. Police policy is handled by the police chief and through the administration. It's not handled by the city of Dearborn Police Department, by the city of Dearborn Council. So you understand that? So your question, if somebody violated a police, a police policy, you need to file a complaint with the Police Department. Do you understand that?
Chief Sheehan doesn't answer my emails, never answer my emails.
Mr. Owen.
So who do I come to?
Mr. Owen, you have full ability and understanding of what you can and cannot do in your rights. If you have a problem, there's an Attorney General, there's the MSP, you know the process. You're asking this body to answer about police policy? We do not have that authority. So I wanna make sure you understand that.
So you're telling me I can file a, a citizen's complaint again against another police officer, and it'll be investigated? And this body doesn't pay the police, am I correct?
Mr. Owen, Mr. Owen, the citizens pay the, pay the people.
You indicated it was okay for, to make a police report, come on.
I'm telling you, you know your, you know what you can do. So go on to your next issue. We do not handle police policy at the city council.
Okay, I got another issue.
Okay.
Osama Sablani is the, owns the APAC, right? And then his father, Mustafa, hold on, hold on, listen, I want, I want, hear you, hear me out. I want nobody interrupting me. Mustafa's dad is partners. Mustafa is a member. Not enough, the mayor is a member. It's a conflict of interest to introduce this contract for $15,000. You guys will be indicted with the feds. The feds are watching, like I said. You guys just can't put this on the agenda. There's a conflict of interest. There's interest by Mustafa, his dad, Osama, and the mayor. So how you gonna approve that? Why don't you put it on the Yemeni or pressing guy somewhere else? You can't, is this a conflict? This is a Kwame Kilpatrick issue here. I'm being, I'm being straightforward to you guys.
Okay.
You think about what I told you.
You're, you're, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, next, we have Mrs. Stokes. Paula Hamlet Stokes? Okay, if you don't want to, that's fine, we go to that. Okay, if you'd like to, then come forward.
Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Gary, welcome. Nice to see you here. This, my comments are very short. They're directed to the council, with the exception of Councilwoman Paris, really. So I guess the rest of you. Is there ever, is there ever a good time to cut employee benefits? Probably not. But it is unfortunate these healthcare changes could not have been implemented before I retired. I was still of sound mind before I retired. I had paid off my home, my car. I was a newly-elected charter commissioner, a newly-elected credit union board member. Now I'm old, senile, and have been given the task of navigating websites, phone banks, and medical terms I have no knowledge of. Today, a former coworker reached out to inquire if I could help her. They, she was upset, stressed, waiting for phone calls to be returned, tearfully stating, "They worry, she worries, and waits for days." And then later, when I arrived home today from conducting a Dearborn municipal retiree meeting, which, just so you know, is like herding angry cats after January 1st, I was met with a letter stating the script I have been taking for over a year and need to stay alive was no longer an approved drug. I then spent over an hour and a half before I came here trying to find the person that could help me. Another former coworker even posted her concerns online in an effort to get help. Her personal information in an effort to get help. What a shame, what a shame that that person had to resort to that to get some attention. Being in the same boat, I wasn't much help, but because of the way I am with these people, I've worked with them, I encourage them to keep trying, be patient, have faith. Do you realize, council members, how stressful this is?
You have 30 seconds.
Every bit of responsibility is falling on the retiree. We have no training. We don't deserve this. Will these problems go away? Not really. Will they improve, hopefully? As council members, you were told a task force of six would be formed to work with the administration on behalf of retirees. And that was basically all it took for you to get off the hook. In conclusion, I will say this. Retirees are resilient, we hold each other up, and we'll continue supporting each other, even if the city chooses not to.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Stokes. Uh, next is Mr. Eric Cullum.
Council members, good evening, Mayor. Basically, I'm just kind of sure to say that at the end of, when we had the healthcare committee, we promised to keep the council informed of what was going on. I think that's been doing, excuse me, that's been done. I know the mayor has received emails. I believe council folks have received emails. And what Paula says is part of the problem, and I don't know where we go from here. I realize this is just January, and this is something that started January 1st, but my members are experiencing the same thing, and that is continuing phone calls, no calls back, people promising in a day or two, I'll get the answer. They don't have it. And again, I just wanna let council know, this is what's going on with the retirees, or at least my group, police and fire retirees. I don't know that there's a, a resolution. But, again, so that council knows, two years down the road, this healthcare advocate service is what we're trying to make you guys, excuse me, council, be aware of, so that when it comes to those two years, as we've been told, there will be like a review process, or a review. I'm asking you to keep that in mind. We're, we're having a rough time. And I know that Buffalo said, we had this gigantic snowstorm, so you didn't get your PNA card. Well, I, I've had one of my members got their PNA card. She's under 65, but she received the card for over, for $500 for her deduction, deductible. She didn't know what to do. Um, I know Mrs. Hoyt is probably being overwhelmed, because I've tried calling her myself. I know other people have. It's a continuing process, and again, kinda just here to let council, keep council aware of what's going on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any more cards, Jackie? All right, this time, if anyone did not fill up the public comment card, if you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record, this is the public comment portion. There is another one at the end of the meeting as well, and then any item we have can be addressed at that item time. Okay, hearing and seeing none, the public comment portion will be closed. Mr. Clerk, before we go forward to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member wished to remove from the consent agenda to discuss individually? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Clerk, can you proceed?
Item number five, the request of offer and support approving all items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Offer.
Support.
The offer by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Enos? Yes. Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Gonna move on to item number nine, resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of January 10th, 2023.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing none, your next roll will be attached to them. Next item, please.
Item 10, ordinance number 23-1784, an ordinance to amend the Traffic and Motor Vehicle Chapter, Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-819 entitled Maximum Charges. Resolution by council members Herrick and Enos to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, your next roll will be tasked to take from the table for its final reading. Ordinance of number section, I'm sorry, ordinance, Section 18-819 sets a minimum standard of fees for wrecker and towing services for removal of vehicles from private property without the consent of vehicle owner. It also sets a minimum standard for hours that owners may retrieve their vehicle, requires the companies to accept major credit cards, and requires companies to provide a receipt upon receipt. Under the ordinance, the council establishes a maximum service fees and charges by resolution. Currently, the ordinance does not specify a penalty for the violation. Therefore, it defaults to a 93-day misdemeanor under Section 1-19. The proposed amendment would change the penalty to a civil infraction punishable by a $1,000 fine, and if a second violation occurs within six months, the fine will increase to $2,500. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 23-1784 entitled An Ordinance to Amend the Traffic and Motor Vehicles Chapter, Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-819 entitled Maximum Charges.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi? Did I hear a yes?
Yes.
There you go. Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Enos?
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 11, resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud approving the appropriation of $8,43,800 from the designated ARPA Innovation and Technology Funding to transition the city to the Google Cloud Platform and Google Workspace. Also approving contracts with Kurasov Technologies Group in the amount of $6,733,900 for Google Cloud deployment, and with CDW Government LLC in the amount of $1,309,900 for Google Workspace deployment, migration, and training, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. Approximately $47 million in one-time funds have been allocated to the city under the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds. These funds are obligated by December 2024 and meet, I'm sorry, must be obligated by December 24 and fully spent by December of '26. The funds allow for significant investment by the city to improve the overall quality of life for our residents, improve resources and tools for their city employees to deliver services, and better to support our business owners to effectively operate and grow within the city. The council has allocated $10 million for information and technology upgrades. This request is of $8 million to support the city's migration to Google Cloud, Google Workspace, and support the redesign of the city's website. The two contracts are split into Kurasov Technology Contract with the request of $6,733,900 to migrate the city to the Google Cloud and update the city's website. The second is the CDW Government LLC Contract in the amount of $1,309,900 to deploy Google Workspace, replacing the city's Microsoft Suite products for city operations. This is a transformative project that will allow the greater transparency and measurement of key performance indicators for the city and support an improved service delivery system. The request is for immediate effect. I know that the mayor is, has, and there's some people here from Google, so we'd like to entertain that, then we can have some questions from council Thursday.
Of course.
Mayor?
Brad, you can come up, Brad. So first and foremost, thank you, Council President. I wasn't here for the cow, but appreciate the time to speak now. This is following up on the presentation that we delivered on 1/5 at the mayor's briefing. We provided basically, uh, an overview of where we currently are as the city, as it pertains to the IT infrastructure that we have, and where we wish to move forward, as well as trying to address some of the risks that are in the portfolio existing right now for the City of Dearborn, largely from a cybersecurity perspective, understanding that this is one of the biggest threats that currently exist to the city, and how we can move forward to really transform service delivery for our residents. ARPA dollars were provided to municipalities across the country, really with that intention in mind. One-time investments that you can make, that create transformation within your municipality to help improve the quality of life for your residents. And that's what this contract and this partnership really will begin to do. If you go and ask our employees right now, most of our employees are still using AS400, green screens and, and black screens. And it's our hope that we finally get out of these outdated systems. We have approval previously from council for our ERP system as well, to really get us, not only in the 21st century, but beyond, so that we are no longer a nine-to-five point-of-service place where you must conduct business, which means if you're not here on a Monday at, you know, 1:30, taking your time off of work to submit your permit, you then cannot submit it. We now become a 24/7, seven-day-a-week operation, where a lot of these service opportunities can be migrated to an online platform, where our technology is designed to fit the needs of our employees, and not the, the opposite, where our employees are forced to find ways to use the technology that currently exists. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Brad from Google. If you'd like to introduce yourself, and then go forward to the presentation that you have, and we'll entertain any questions after that.
Thank you, Mayor Hamud. Council President, Council President Pro Tem, members of the council, I really appreciate you taking the time to hear from us tonight. My name is Brad Hoffman. I'm the Director of Google Cloud Public Sector for 19 states in the United States. We call it the Central Region. We cover state and local government, higher education, and all of the K through 12 systems. While many people associate Google with Silicon Valley, many are surprised to learn that Google actually has a really significant physical presence within the state of Michigan. We have five campuses, the biggest being in Detroit and Ann Arbor, and we have somewhere around 700 full-time employees within the state of Michigan that live and work in the state of Michigan. Last year, Michigan consumed Google's consumer products on an enormous scale. We drove about $8.5 billion in economic activity across 561,000 individual businesses. All businesses that received requests, directions, phone calls, our assistant made appointments for, all things of this nature within the city, or within the state. Approximately eight months ago, my team began working with the mayor's team to help guide Dearborn through a process of identifying opportunities for improvements on how best to, to address shortcomings in some of the IT systems and tools that the city is using. Six Googlers, conducting over 20 hours of interviews, met with, with Dearborn employees and did a full canvassing of, of your IT systems. Immediately, it became clear to our engineers and analysts how special Dearborn is as a city. We've never seen the level of talent and energy you, you have in this city. There are so many people that work for the city and that are in and around the city that are from Ivy League schools. I mean, this is a truly unique place, and it's somewhere we really connected with, you know, as a part of Google. What became clear from the conversations we had is that Dearborn's aging digital infrastructure is preventing public servants from meeting the standards of, of excellence you are committed to. What's also clear is Dearborn City leadership is committed to changing that, to ensure that services are faster, more efficient, and more accessible to everyone in the city. From these many hours together, it's clear that Dearborn wants more than simple IT upgrades. You want to be a customer service leader for municipal government, and you want to help residents fulfill their potential rather than slowing them down. Some of the key areas we identified were internal tools, service responsiveness and availability, process modernization, the problem and opportunity that is data, and as always, security. By modernizing your customer-facing websites, collaboration tools, data analytics, along with your licensing and permitting services, Dearborn will be able to serve the public more effectively. Further, recent advances in technology allow for services to be provided in multiple languages without significant rework. Modern platforms like ours build data, build with data access in mind. They free up the data and break down silos. Organizations that align their decision-making to real-time data make better decisions. Additionally, better access to data allows for a more genuine relationship with the public as it fosters easier and more frictionless transparency. This will all be supported by tools built for the modern age focused on employee collaboration. When you recruit new talent from the higher education system, you'll no longer need to regressively train them on platforms from 30 years ago. Rather, your back-office operations will mirror the state-of-the-art environments that are at some of the most modern companies in the world, like even our competitor Salesforce, who use Workspace, and institutions like the University of Michigan. Finally, everything we build will use the same security principles we designed our technology with. Google is the only hyperscale cloud vendor on Earth that encrypts all data at, in flight and at rest by default. All data is always encrypted. Along with the technical, technical work we will be doing, we will also plan to help the City of Dearborn educate the public on our partnership and this extraordinary city. Dearborn is already a leader by the very nature of the fabric of your communities. Your emphasis on education, the entrepreneurial DNA of the city is like no place we've, we've worked in. It's time for Dearborn to claim the ground that you've already taken and emerge from the pandemic, ready to live up to the full potential as a leader in civic business administration, citizen service, and the technology job, jobs hub for the upper citizen service, and the technology jobs hub for the Upper Midwest. Finally, I wish to make clear Google's commitment to seeing this project through. Google Cloud's most senior leadership, Thomas Kurian, the CEO of Google Cloud, and Karen Duhaut, the CEO of Google Cloud Public Sector, are both aware and engaged with this project. Further, you will have our commitment manifested in black and white in the contracts you've received from us. We are the only cloud vendor in the world to offer government a fixed cost for infrastructure. Just want to be very clear about this. If you work with Amazon, Microsoft, any of these other hyperscale clouds, you pay for what you use, and if they miscalculate the size of what you use, you will pay for more. We have sized your environment to the appropriate workload to what we're doing with you, and if we're wrong and it goes over, we pay for it. There is no true-up at the end of it. We pay for the difference. Further, we've given you a fixed cost price for the services. We will deliver against each of the outcomes in our statement of work, and until we do, you do not pay for it. We're one of the only vendors in the world that works that way. The City of Dearborn is like no other city in the U.S. Only those who spend time here understand the warm fabric of this community. It is my teams, my leadership, Google's great honor to have the opportunity to work with you on this project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. And I guess one more comment I'll make.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for that presentation. Is over the last year, with council support, we've been able to build up capacity within our IT department. We've expanded IT support services, IT project managers. We're in the midst of the interview processes for the software developers that we'd like to have online that'll be able to code using Google's low-to-no-code software in order to help build the modules that we'll be implementing across the city. Then what's more so in learning in my conversation today with Brad, for example, he was just in Arizona, where the state of Arizona is rolling out the Google Workspace, and when it began to roll out, they had a team of fifty individuals dressed in Google shirts at the premise of the buildings, just standing there waiting for anybody to raise their hand to seek assistance when the rollout commences. So more than just our staff will be onsite. We have the commitments from Google and the contractors that they're working with, that they'll have personnel onsite here at our city building throughout all the implementation, but at the major milestones will even increase capacity to be onsite to make sure that every employee, including council themselves, once you migrate over to Google Workspace, will have the resources you need to address any questions when it comes up.
All right, thank you. So at this time, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. I know you had the presentation as well, but I'm glad that Mr. Hoffman is here, and the level that you had addressed, it was really concerning for me because we are, a pleasure that you did address it, because we did have, I had some concerns, and I'm sure my colleagues did regarding our current state where we are out of compliance, where we don't have upgrade capacity ability, and worried about actually the security and safety of what we are actually doing. So that was my bigger concern, the security aspect, as well as getting to the future technology. So the encrypted aspect and the fact that you had six people here for twenty hours going through to see what we do in Dearborn, because we do have things that are different. I would always say, if you want to go online, you got to be able to get a map, be able to get a permit of their home, and so I do appreciate of us getting to that at this time. But I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues to see if we have any questions from my colleagues regarding what's before us today. Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for your presentation today. The mayor's office did meet with us and went through the information that they compiled and gave to us, but we still had some questions remaining, and having you here to address, you covered some of that just naturally in your presentation. But I'm excited about this. I'm a former Dearborn City employee myself. It's been a few years, but it did feel like we had kind of a patchwork quilt of programs that different departments were working with. And as you said, we'd bring folks in from the outside who had to learn these outdated programs in order to be able to work with our staff and to serve the public. I'm excited about what this means as far as providing more twenty-four-seven services to our residents, as well as making our employees their jobs more efficient. And when we talked about processes, we have tried different things over the years. For example, somebody mentioned the permit process and being able to track where your permit is, you know, as you're doing, say, a home improvement project. And these are the kinds of things that I think we have been behind in compared to other cities, and now thanks to this investment, thanks to using the ARPA funds, this is a really unique opportunity for us to really jump in and make an investment in the infrastructure, the technology infrastructure that we've needed for quite some time. So thank you for bringing your expertise here and having your staff available to answer our questions going forward.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Councilman Parris?
Thank you, Council President. What I did want to say is I used to be a city employee too for a number of years, and you're right, we still have some equipment from twenty, thirty years ago, and it's frustrating because, you know, we're trying to attract employees, we're trying to retain employees, we're trying to attract development within the city. Just having this opportunity as a city councilperson to have access to various departments and buildings and some of the infrastructure that we have, we have some true needs. I mean, we can't go forward until we make some improvements. I mean, there's no doubt about that. Now, how we go about it, you know, we may have some questions or concerns to address, but I can even remember running for council even last time that one of the biggest concerns for me was coming up with a three-eleven system that so many other communities have. I mean, you're even going back in time, seeing that I believe just a matter of a few years ago, we had twenty-six or twenty-eight communities around us that had a see-quick-fix program. I mean, that's easy, just to go ahead and document where the complaints are, the potholes are, get the city to go out, and you get a response on it. So many of these other communities had that, we did not. And now we're talking about much more than a three-eleven system, and hopefully you're going to be able to deliver that for us, and hopefully the mayor and the administration will be on top of that. But I do have some concerns. It's a lot of money. You know, we have the ARPA funds that are paying it, but that's still the residents' money. It just happens to be coming back to us. And we, as stewards of the community, stewards for the funding and so on, we want to make sure we get bang for the buck, and we're getting what we're going to expect. So I would ask the mayor, if at all possible, to really keep council apprised as to what's going on with this, and I would even go so far as, any of the remaining ARPA or even something like this, get your employees involved, and I know you have a commitment to do that. I'm hearing that. But let your employees speak, you know, their experiences and what they want, you know, to be able to retain these employees. And I would only say for ARPA funds in the future, get the community involved. We did that for CDBG funds, you know, we got the community involved, what they wanted to see, but we still have a lot of ARPA money left. Get the community involved in what they feel is the best use for the money. So I appreciate your presentation. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilman, and through the Council President. As it pertains to periodic updates, we'll be using the mayor's briefings to speak about the milestones that come across. Some of the council members shared a similar question. What I'll say is every time we accomplish a milestone, we'll be bringing it forward at emerged briefing, because we're not looking to hide away any of these things that we're, these projects that we're working on. Secondly, you're also going to be experiencing the transformation for yourselves. I mean, the software technologies that you, the applications you use will also change, right? So you'll also be aware in real time when that happens. As it pertains to employees being engaged and updated throughout the process, over the last eight months, in addition to our IT department going to every single department, speaking with employees within every single department, identifying their IT needs. When Google came, they also met with our various departments across the city, and then we even identified high users within every single department, which we implemented, we provided them with Chromebooks temporarily to be used for several periods of time to ensure, for example, that the finance department can use the Workspace that Google has, the legal department can use the Chromebook. So it took high users in every single department. I mean, also collected back that feedback. And additionally, having Google employees present, where we brought in employees for a period of time, where they were there for hours, answering any and every single question that they had to make sure that there was a comfort with what's happening. Employees have been a part of the process since the very beginning because the technology that we're building, we're trying to build around their needs. And as we kick this off, you know, the Google team will be working with, you know, department by department, depending on the modules and programs that we're building, to see how employees are going through their current process, and what we have to construct to basically take a complex process, make it simple, which hopefully reduce time and waste, and improve outcomes for our residents in totality.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so, I mean, ironically, I'm using Google's Workspace to read my notes, so, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with the spirit of this project, and it's clear to residents and to former and current employees that we need an IT infrastructure upgrade. And I've mentioned it many times on the record, and I support modernization and streamlined processes for all of our residents, especially how they interact with the city. Now, that being said, I still feel council needs additional supporting documentation and information, like, for example, the full IT contract that we will be signing to ensure the project is the correct and fiscally responsible solution that we've been looking for. You know, I enjoy, I don't mind taking everybody's word for it, but typically when I sign something, I actually just want to see it in front of me so I know what I'm signing up for. And so I just have a hard time committing to an eight-million-dollar project without a clear scope of work tied to deliverables, you know, ROI being defined, like return on investment, defined project milestones to ensure we're getting our value for our money, which I'm sure exists. I just haven't physically seen them. It's an extremely ambitious project. I mean, you've said so, the mayor's said so in our briefings, and, you know, I don't need to remind everyone that Dearborn has undertaken ambitious projects in the past, like the CSO project, Montgomery Ward, West Dearborn downtown development, you know. We just have to make sure to dot our i's and cross our t's to ensure we don't end up in something that, you know, ends up overrunning in cost or ending up in litigation. So that's why, you know, I feel it's our body as a fiduciary to also look at contracts that we're going to be approving the expenditures on. You know, the impact to city services just needs to be understood. You know, we have a project timeline of somewhere between eight to twelve months, you know, understanding what that's going to look like, because there's a lot of aspects to this, you know. We're going to be changing our ERP simultaneously, we're going to be changing our website simultaneously, we're going to be changing, you know, how the employees themselves work. So, you know, and I really appreciate that you guys are going to be on the ground and helping us, and that's good. I just want to see how exactly that's defined to make sure that the city has recourse to get the assistance that we need. You know, so let's see. There are unique challenges with working with IT technology as well, like, for example, you know, how the data we upload to the cloud will be, you know, we're going to have our own Workspace, you know, who owns our data? Is that going to be completely owned by us? Like, these are just general concerns that would be spelled out in a contract, and I'm sure you can address them here as well. It's just that I would want to see, you know, your words here reflect what we actually are going to go sign, you know. Once we see all those kinds of things, I think we could definitely make an informed decision on the strategic plan to ensure that, you know, this all makes sense and that we go into it with eyes wide open. You know, like I said, without this information, we always risk cost overrun, missed deadlines, failed deliverables, and we could always go over the budget that we initially allocated to go do all of this. And that's why, unless there's a reason why we have to do this today, I would propose looking at this a little bit more deeply once we get a little bit more information from the administration on what exactly we're putting into this expenditure. So, thank you, and I guess if you have...
There were a couple of questions in there.
Yeah. I think if you'd like to address a few of those concerns that Councilmen brought up regarding, now we're done assigning the contract, contract assignment by the chief executive.
Yeah, which is fine. Yeah.
It's not fine, that's the way it works. Designed by the mayor, we give him authorization, so I want to make sure we've been having... I'm sorry. There you go, is that better? Yeah, we've been, we've been having some concerns on what is role, so I just want to make sure it's clear. The questions that you're asking, I think, Mr. Hoffman, can you address, especially the protection, the security aspect? I know you had indicated it was encrypted, but the Councilman has some good points regarding whether the data is being held, where is it being held at, to who's the ownership of them, if you'd like to address those.
Yeah, absolutely. So your data is always yours. So when we do a, so we'll put the data in two buckets. We'll say the data you generate as an organization through your email collaboration documents, contracts, all the things you accumulate doing business, that's, we'll call that the Workspace area. All of that is your data. Google Cloud, Google Workspace, is the only collaboration platform on Earth that is FedRAMP High certified. We have the highest certification for security in the world. In fact, we just signed on the U.S. Army as our latest customer for Google Workspace. Where we store data in the cloud, now this would be like a permitting and licensing system where you might have different forms of data. That data is also kept at a FedRAMP High Data Center that is deeded to you, and one of the biggest parts of the project is when we set up the security controls, removing ourselves from the vessel where your data is stored. So Google Cloud has some of the most sensitive data on the planet in it. We have, you know, the NSA, CIA are all our customers that we're doing data analytics with, and we carry some of the highest certifications in the industry. And all of that is your data, it is treated the way you want it to be treated, and it never leaves its contained vessel.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Councilman Hamud, is there any other concerns? I know you had a few, but is there anything that you think he could answer?
I can speak to a few of them. As it pertains to the return on investment, we presented that in the one-five presentation.
Yeah, you presented that.
And the slide was listed at the back. It might not be an exact dollar amount, but what Google does go and provide is it takes the averages as it pertains to waste and productivity, and it provides you those numbers rather than giving you a hard account number. As it pertains to project plan timeline, that was also emailed to all of council yesterday, the project plan timeline, and the best we can do is give you a rough estimate for what each module will take, depending on what implementation actually looks like. The Councilman himself mentioned that we're also going through an ERP change, and the website changes by having it consolidated by Google as well will hopefully make for more seamless transition. But we've provided the best possible time estimates, and the mayor's briefing is what I've committed to, to provide those major milestone updates. And again, council and council staff will also be going through some of the migrations themselves, given that you also use some of the applications available by the City of Dearborn. So we've provided, you know, thoughtful responses to those questions in the presentation we delivered on one-five, as well as in the follow-ups that we sent out over the last day or so.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do remember the presentation regarding the cost recovery was generated in percentages, and we also took into consideration that we wouldn't have to have software upgrades, and we had questions regarding why the software purchase was longer than the term. So I, yeah, I understand that, I appreciate that. And for me, the NSA, CIA, and the U.S. Army, how about the Navy?
I do believe we have the Navy as a customer.
Our brother is a commander over there, I just wanted to make sure you were in with the Navy as well. Councilman Abraham, I think you have some questions?
I'd like to just make some comments, I think, more than questions. I can tell you, I've been here the longest out of these people, over twenty years on this council, and this is probably the single largest internal initiative administrations have taken on in the last twenty years. Under the leadership of Mayor Hamud, the ARPA funds have been really designated for transformational projects. IT probably is, I hate to say it, the low-hanging fruit internally. We're going to do some capro projects, we're going to do some recreation projects, but really this is probably going to be the single most important project for our elected officials for this term, and probably for the next five terms. It's going to set the bar, lift it high, and really set us up to be in a position to embrace technology, hopefully forever in the future, and that we also commit to a plan to keep us technologically advanced, so we don't fall behind again. With that, you know, in total, I think bundled together with the hardware and the grants, we have about ten million dollars on the table, and I think this entire body is concerned about that level of investment to make sure that we actually get at least ten million dollars in payback. We know we're catching up, and we know we want to be advanced, and that's a long way to go, and it's a difficult path. I've spent a lot of time going back and forth since the presentation on the fifth, and then again on Thursday at the mayor's briefing session to try and get comfortable with this, and I'm almost there. I don't know that I would ever be totally comfortable signing a contract for ten million dollars in an area that I'm not an expert, but that's what we are elected to do, and that's what we're trying to get comfortable with. And I know that... And I know that it's difficult to, for the administration, to work with seven individuals and get them all equally comfortable or almost comfortable with an item of this magnitude, given that I can only speak for myself, far from an expert. The really only remaining concern I have is, and I've spoken directly with the mayor, is the 10% contingency that the administration has requested of us. I will just state on the record, I think that's too high. You've already made us comfortable that many of the costs are fixed. I've spoken again directly with the mayor on what potentially could happen to increase the scope of the contract, to push us over. I don't mind going slow, and I know that's a conflict at times. But to me, if you take your time and you go slow, you make fewer mistakes. I've just learned that over time. The mayor is very ambitious, he's got, he wants to tackle this project. I will just say on the record, I would feel much better with a smaller contingency of somewhere near 5%, rather than 10%, just to put it into context. 10% contingency for this project overall is $730,000 of ARPA funds. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Just one comment, Council President?
Yes, Mayor.
Just a note for the public who might not have known. In our pursuit of trying to transform our IT and cybersecurity endeavors at the city, we received a $2.5 million grant from the state of Michigan, which will supplement the dollars that we have existing in our work. So, I just wanted to comment on that. And it pertains to Councilman Abraham's request, you know, at the leisure of the council, whichever way they decide.
Thank you, Mayor, I do appreciate that. And I know the next item does have that. And as I indicated before, to the residents in the first year with the council, under your leadership and the council's approval of the philanthropy and grants department, we have received over $28 million, which lessens the burden on our residents of tax dollars back to the city of Dearborn. So, I do appreciate the fact that this is approximately 10%, the 2.5 on the next item does help. I think, for me, I asked specifically about the cost, the fixed costs, and the cooperative aspect. And I was, and as you stated, you are the only vendor that does have a fixed cost, unlike other companies that do this. And I do appreciate that, because it does make it hard for municipalities to budget when they're not sure what the overruns are. We've all seen it, you know, we've dealt with construction projects, how they've run over and over and over, and just continue to grow. So, for me, I'm very comfortable with this. And I think that all of us had heard from our residents that although residents do like to come to the city to pay their bills and like to walk in, but not on everything. And I think the 24/7 operation aspect is a very big deal in bringing us to the future. So, I am in full support of this project, and I'm very happy that the assurances you gave us regarding the cost. Because to me, that's how I look at it, as our job. As one of my colleagues indicated, stewards of the tax dollars, it is always our, all our money. The money the federal government is giving is from, out of our taxes. And the ARPA money is coming back to the city, and I believe wholeheartedly in this is the type of project that we needed to be secure. And with the grant through our state at $2.5 million, I feel even more confident regarding it, so. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilman Hamud?
Yes, of course, the Council President.
Okay, just one second. You'll be next, Councilman Alswafi.
So, I mean, I appreciate all the conversation about cost. And so, that also brings me to another thing that I still don't really understand, that we still haven't really discussed or defined, which has to do with the statement of work and how, I mean, as you said, as the gentleman told us, you know, there is a defined statement of work that exists, and that's how we're going to pay our, pay out our contract based on, you know, delivery of the services that are promised. I guess, having not been shown what the actual statement of work is, I still don't fully understand what exactly we are paying for in terms of like applications and APIs and things like that. That's, and it's not that I have, it's not that I don't think, like, for example, we sat, they sat with our employees for 20 hours, which is great, and it's good, because it's helpful for scoping out a project, which is good. Like, like I said, a lot of the things that, the steps that we took to get here were very good steps. My problem is just that we have not physically seen what the end results of those steps were. So, I have a hard time understanding what we're, exactly we're paying for. And so, that's why I just wonder why we are not being provided that information. And that's all I've been asking for, for now almost a week. And it's like either, it could be spelled out on the contract in denser language, which is fine, and I was okay with that, because I was not trying to add additional administrative burden to you guys to have to create an individual report for me. Or it could be something simpler, where it is just a statement of work with a timeline attached to it. So, that's the information that I've been kind of looking for, that I still don't feel that we have been given in order to make this, what is probably the second largest expenditure after the annual budget that we're going to make, and one of the most transformative, in my opinion, because I'm a huge fan of the IT infrastructure projects that we're going to be participating in as a council.
So, thank you. Councilman, Mayor? Yeah, I'll speak to that. So, a few things. In the one five presentation, we actually gave a table with a line item of how much money is being spent towards these projects. If you look at the $8 million, a big chunk of it, two and a half million right off the top, is towards the website creation. So, website creation is basically for, you know, constructing the website. The content creation is actually on the responsibility of our communications and internal departments, which is why on the proposed timeline, you have a timeline for how long it will take to actually build the actual website. But that doesn't include how long it'll take for us to populate that website. Another big chunk of the money, as in the table, is also for the cloud migration. And so, moving us to the cloud, and so if you take those two components together, that's really the largest chunks of the actual investment that we're making. As it pertains to the application development, we listed some of the things specifically, like licensing and permitting. But another aspect of this contract is as we begin to roll up our sleeves, 20 hours is not enough to determine every single application that we will need as a city. So, as we begin to execute this contract, it'll be going in, working within the departments to see what more we can offer these employees, based around the day-to-day operations they're conducting, to begin to amplify their roles and responsibilities, and migrate that work online if possible, or at least supplement the technology that employees have, to make service delivery that much better for residents. You also have marked in that table some of the translation services that will go into effect, as well as some of the virtual bots that will be available to supplement our community relations team. You know that we've consolidated the call center to 943-2150 last year. We want to get to the 311. With that, we want to take it even a step further. So, if you're online, you know, I'll give you the perfect example. If I'm traveling overseas and I have Verizon Wireless, I go on Verizon's app, I just type "traveling." A schedule pops up and tells me what country you're traveling to. I enter that country, it says what dates will you exit the country? You enter those dates, and it automatically gets my phone registered to leave the country. There should be no reason why we can't have a virtual bot that does something similar, for example, on scheduling a permit. Or my garbage was missed, and I need to schedule it to be picked back up. Or I lost a garbage can. You don't have to call somebody if you lost a garbage can. Maybe you can just text a virtual chat, and it'll say, "I lost my garbage can, here's my address, and here's, you know, here's what happened." And so, a lot of those, that project scoping will also occur in the first few months as we embark on this endeavor. And those milestones will be shared in real time with council, separate from the major milestones that have already been outlined in that presentation.
Right.
Right, thank you.
And I just, I don't want to sound like a back-and-forth thing, but I'm just trying to still genuinely understand. If we're going to be creating new applications, you know, in IT consultant talk, part of that also could end up with what's called scope creep. So, how do we know that everything that we're going to need is covered under the current contract? Like, it has to be spelled out in there, up to a certain point, because, you know, how long are we going to keep them on the hook?
And I'll answer that perfectly. It's a great question. So, there are three ways for us to develop the programs, and Brad, correct me if I'm wrong. A portion of this contract, this staff will be onsite, assisting us with some of the applications we absolutely know that we need to construct it, like licensing and permitting. So, that's one. We just task Google with build the application for us.
Right, and that's enumerated on this work.
Correct. The second way in which we build capacity, because to your point, we can't always just have Google here building applications for us. The second is they'll work with the software developers that we're trying to hire, as well as the other identified employees throughout key departments, and working with them to co-develop applications throughout the city. Because the ultimate goal is for us to build the institutional knowledge. That's why we're hiring software developers ourselves, so then they can embark on their own, without Google needing to be present. If we identify a problem, we then can just build the applications ourself on the platform that Google is providing us. That's the ultimate goal of this contract, is building the institutional knowledge for us to do it on our own. I agree with you. You can't always come back to a contract with Google and say, "Now I need an application for this. This one is outdated, come update for us." The ultimate goal is for us to build the institutional knowledge, which is why council approved two software developers, and we're in the midst of those interview processes. So, we can build that capacity and begin to embark on our own after we've learned how to co-create, as well as watch them create. So, that's why there's like a three-pronged process in this contract.
Right, and I'm familiar with Google Workspace, and I'm familiar with API-first development. And ideally, you know, the applications will be accessible to our software programmers to be able to create the new applications that they need. Like I said, but, for example, if we're going to do things that are out of scope, you know, the project proposal is just, it's just a very simple line item on a table, on a PowerPoint. I just have a hard time signing off on a financial proposal that is this simple of a summary that doesn't actually include some of the details that go into that. So, I really do genuinely wish we had just been given the actual detailed statement of work of what they are promising to the city for the $8 million.
Okay, I think that's been, that's been asked and answered, so I appreciate, you know, your statement, Councilman. We have Councilman Alswafi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you just fine. Thank you, Council President.
All right, go ahead, Councilman, I apologize.
Not a problem. Hey, Brad, first of all, thank you for coming here. I know you're busy and you have a lot of states to cover, so I appreciate you coming here. And as you can probably sense in the room, that this is a very important topic for us. This is something that we've been waiting for to improve, and you kind of sense that from the questions from my colleagues. I know from your presentation, one thing that really, you know, really caught my attention was when you said, "Service the public effectively." And I just want to dig in a little bit deeper on that. Right now, our residents, including myself, right, I'm overseas on a military deployment, a lot of interactions that I need to do, even if it's as simple as paying an inspection fee, I have to either send somebody to go wait in line and pay it, or lick a stamp and send it in the mail, which is, you know, crazy to think about. So, what I really want to understand is, how are the residents going to be impacted by this? What are some of the services that the residents are going to feel when we spend this $8 million? I understand the permitting example, but I'll tell you, residents don't get a permit every month, maybe a few times. But something like bill payment, complaints, how's that going to be processed?
Absolutely. Great question. So, I'll take it a couple of different directions here. First, obviously, licensing and permitting will be vastly improved and much more available, efficient, and easier to access. But putting that aside for a second, when we took a look at your website, for example, and I don't want to pick on the existing website too aggressively, but I will say, you know, things aren't immediately intuitive, and things aren't easily searchable. Many of the links behind certain areas that were just sort of facades, and there was nothing behind that, all of that is going to be cleaned up. We are a world leader in building applications that, we, how many of you use Gmail but went to Gmail class? We've built these applications to be instantly intuitive, so that you can see immediately where I'm supposed to go to conduct the type of business I'm after within two, three clicks at the most. Further, we're going to make applications and views and interactions available in multiple languages. We have ways of translating documents going out instantaneously. So, if you have documents you want to share with the public, and you want them formatted in a different language and sent out, we can do that in a couple milliseconds per document. We can read documents coming in, so when people hand-write a document and submit it to the city, and it's handwritten in another language, we can read 50 languages handwritten. We can read 200 languages typed. So, we'll make all of that available to be translated. So, being able to take a, to take an application off your phone, print it, fill it out on your phone, take a picture of it, submit it, have all that data entered into the system, these are all the things we're all used to when we buy a car, apply for a home loan. All of those things are already being done in your personal life. We're just going to bring your city services forward into the consumer age where we exist now, Google. And it's a level of service everyone's come to, you know, be very familiar with, with all of their personal dealings.
Thank you. Councilman Alswafi, did you hear, did you hear the response?
Yes, Council President, I did hear the response, but I don't think it was sufficient enough to, you know, what I want to hear. I know you said, take a picture of notes and applications, but really, most residents are, go to the city to pay bills or some other transactions related to maybe transferring the title of their home or whatnot. How will those change? Because in my mind, the relationship with the residents to the city should be invisible. Nobody looks forward to coming to the city to wait in line to pay a water bill. How are we going to make that easier for them?
So, is the question how to reach people that are perhaps less digitally engaged?
No.
So, I'll answer. So, Councilman, one thing you should be aware of, though, is some of that happens as it pertains to our ERP system. And so, like water bills, for examples, on the BSNAs, is that not? Tyler Technologies, there you go. And so, while we're also going through ERP upgrade at the same time, a lot of those upgrades will be made available, so that it's seamless to go online, pay your water bill, seamless to go online, pay your taxes, seamless to go online, if you want to do, I think the example you provided me in a private conversation, was right now, if you want to pay your taxes on a, you know, monthly basis, you have to bring in a voided check, provide it to our finance department, they then verify, send it over. The bank accepts it, and then the withdrawals can begin to execute. Whereas just about everywhere else in America, you can just log in online, directly connect your bank account, and have it taken out. And so, it's our hope to get to that level of seamlessness. I think what I spoke to you about was, one, our website capacity and capability, that's what Google will help us build out. Two, the ERP system capacity and capability, which we're also undergoing as well. And then, three is just making sure that those partner organizations, be it the banks or whatever else it might be, are also in agreement with what we're trying to do. So, that way, we have their approvals and their acceptance into the place that we're trying to go.
And I'll just add one thing.
And I appreciate that clarification. I'm sorry, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, Tyler's a phenomenal ERP company, they really are as good as it gets. There are some things they don't do, though, that we can help with, that are the glue around the side. So, when we're talking about virtual agents that can communicate with the public in multiple languages, if someone's not here to answer a question, they will be 24 hours a day. All this stuff can help enrich what you're doing with Tyler and create bridges into your ERP system.
Thank you. Councilman Alswafi?
Yeah, so just to be clear, by the end of this contract, by the end of execution of this contract, and the $8 million are spent, are our residents able to pay their bills easier than the way they're paying it now, more seamlessly, online? Is that going to happen when you spend the last dollar of the $8 million?
Correct.
Yes, Councilman, the answer is yes.
Okay, and then another thing, I know you talked about fixed costs, and, you know.
I need to answer, because I'm responsible.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, you said you had a fixed cost, and if there's over, that you would cover the cost. So, are you comfortable with the $8 million estimate?
Yes, we've carefully looked at it, we're very comfortable with it. And there's two aspects to that, just to be clear for everyone. There is the services, that means the human beings coming and making your licensing application, licensing and permitting. So, there's human work that will be done. That's one part of it. The other part of it is the infrastructure it runs on. Many people don't realize that Google is the second-largest hardware manufacturer on earth. So, servers, systems, all running in our data centers. That's where your licensing and permitting system will run, in one of our large data centers here in the US. And that infrastructure costs money, and it will replace infrastructure that you'd previously purchased and set up on your own in machine rooms. And the reason most of the world is moving in this direction is because it's so expensive to own and operate these machine rooms. And Google and other companies at scale are very good at doing it very securely, and it saves a lot of money. And so, there are two aspects. There's that services work, and then there is the infrastructure work. And we have fixed both costs for the city. One other thing I want to point out, too, is regarding the ARPA funding and the cost, anxiety around the cost, which I 100% understand. anxiety around the cost, which I 100% understand. Within the space of IT technology and modernization of government systems, there's this concept called the cloud migration bubble. And it's this high cost you have to get over to get your systems up into the cloud, get out of the old systems, and pay off your technical debt. The ARPA funding is a blessing, because it allows you to airlift yourself out of that technical debt and reach a future state that's far less expensive and significantly more secure. You'll be behind our firewalls in our data centers, which is a far safer place to be. And typically, companies have to borrow money to do that, right? Or they borrow money and then they pay it off when they reach the state of Nirvana and the lower cost. In this situation, you have a government program to help you go from second or third place in the race, or, sorry, last place in the race, to first place in the race. And this is an ambitious project for Dearborn, it is not for my team.
Well, thank you for saying that, because that's a couple of questions we did have. I know it's not for your team, but I appreciate it. I wanted to make sure you said that, because I'm very comfortable with it, and I wanted to make sure my colleagues have an opportunity to ask these questions. So I do appreciate it, Mr. Hoffman. At this time, I'd like to see if there's anybody from the public like to speak, and I remind anyone, no comments shall be made...
Council President, I still have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't know you had something else. I apologize, go ahead, Councilman, I'm sorry.
Yes, I think you were just answering my question. I just wanted to ask, is there an annual cost to this? So after we spend the initial investment, is there an annual cost to maintaining this database?
Yes, you have to pay for the infrastructure it runs on annually. So services are a one-time fee, and then our support of the infrastructure and the application is an ongoing fee. Obviously, it's significantly less than the original fee. And I want to point out, three years ago, we did this with Pittsburgh, just the infrastructure. We moved their infrastructure in the cloud. You can call the CIO there, and they will tell you, we met every commitment. We moved them in the first year, moved their VMs as they existed, now they're converting them to digital native, and they're actually lowering their cost month by month and increasing the level of services they're delivering, because they're doing what Mayor Hamood described, and they're writing applications for themselves.
And the other element I'll add, Councilman Al-Swafi, is, for example, you know, right now, we pay a subscription fee with Microsoft and the likes to use their applications, and so we'll be canceling all those subscriptions and engaging with Google on their applications.
And as a part of the contract, Google is paying for the first year of your workspace, so that you don't need to pay both.
Yeah, no, we were given that brief, I appreciate that. Councilman Al-Swafi, can you hear me here?
Yep, I can hear you just fine. I hear you said, you know, several times that we'll be able to lower costs. Are we lowering costs in manpower, or, you know, how are we lowering costs? Is it less employees, is it less hours?
Well, from a physical systems perspective, in nearly every case we've worked, it is significantly more expensive to maintain and operate your own machine rooms, where you can, you know, this is why the world is kind of moving in this direction. You know, on average, it's approximately 50% savings per year when you compare System A, on-premise legacy, we call them, to System B in the cloud, based on, you know, I don't want to get too nerdy in the weeds here, but containerized environments and digital native development. The applications are much thinner, lighter, they're easier to expose data, they just cost less.
I understand, I appreciate that answer. Just going, I want to circle back to the question I asked earlier. You feel like the estimate, you're comfortable with the estimate, it's a pretty solid estimate?
Yeah, we have to be. It goes through about 10 layers of approval and analysis by our risk. We have a huge team that evaluates risk, scope, everything, to ensure that if we sign our name and put our logo against this project, a logo we are extraordinarily protective of, that we will deliver against the end result.
Okay, Councilman, did you have another question for him?
So then, yes, yes, I do. So you would be comfortable then with a 5% contingency instead of 10%?
The contingency, Mayor, go ahead, the contingency is not for them, it's for the administrative... Mayor, would you like to...
I understand, yeah, no, I understand that, but there should be, that shouldn't be an issue if it's 5% instead of 10%. And the reason why I say that, a lot of times, when we put these high contingencies, is to cover up a bad process, not saying on purpose, but it just allows for that flexibility not to be as accurate as you, as one should be. So I believe 5%, especially in this large amount, is fair, I'd be comfortable with that. And this is for the administration, not necessarily Brett.
Yeah, so Councilman, to that question, what I'll say is, the last time you suggested we go from 10 to 5, you were mistaken, and the cost went over 5%. That was on the roofroam project for the Ford Community Performing Arts Center. Obviously, with this contract...
I wasn't mistaken.
You were, because I took into account inflation.
The estimates, when I asked if the estimates were straightforward, and if there was any issues with the estimate, they said, no, these are the actual costs, we shouldn't go over.
But we're operating in the world of hyperinflation. With that said, as it pertains to this professional services contract, that is different, the contingency we requested is obviously 10%. The reason we asked for it is in terms of, not as much of like, if their estimates is off, but is our scope broad enough? And so if our scope were to change, where we might want to add a few more things throughout that process, it gives us the leisure and the flexibility to do so without coming back through a, you know, bureaucratic process to get it done.
I'll just add the comment, though, within the scope, the contingency is ours. If we size this wrong, and you, if it becomes necessary as a part of delivering the project to consume a lot more server capacity than we had scoped, then we have to eat that cost entirely.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Al-Swafi?
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Holmes. Councilman Abraham?
Two quick ones, probably on opposite end is the spectrum of this conversation. I'll start by hitting the runway with a detailed question, because I think anybody that's watching wants to know how it's gonna affect the end user, the taxpayers, the residents of our Is the vision that a homeowner, let's say as an example, would have a single point-of-entry account that would link all the activities that they participate in within the city, whether it's building and safety, water, tax bills? How will the actual users be comfortable with this system the way you envision it? Or your team?
All right, so are you, okay, let me make sure I'm answering the question. When we redo the website, there will be a way for citizens to engage and enter requests for permitting and licensing. Their experience will be unique to that process. Are you asking me if they'll be able to create an account within the city portal to access other systems and view other, is that the question?
Yes.
As far as the scope of our project goes, yes. I can't speak to what you'll provide them as far as Tyler Technology goes. That goes beyond the scope of what we would be delivering and building. But from within the scope of the Google statement of work, the answer is yes.
Well, I guess I'm a little concerned, then, because we thought we were, let me just ask maybe a follow-up question if I could. Specifically, is your scope of work exclusively to the building and safety licensing process?
No, no, there's significantly other things on this list. But I wanted to make sure I drew a line of distinction for you. Where we would interface with the public will be around licensing and permitting your city's website. The internal staff at the city of Dearborn may link the IDs, but I am not aware of that as an aspect of the statement of work.
Correct. If you look at two of the example websites that we really like, Boulder Colorado, we mentioned, as well as Boston, Massachusetts. And so if you go to Boulder Colorado's websites, a lot of it from a resident perspective is, what services or resources are available to me, given my personal information? So if you go to Boulder Colorado's website, you enter, here's my information, socioeconomic status, family size, whatever else it might be, and it spits out every possible program within that city that's applicable to those residents. So that's one possibility. Two is the virtual chats in terms of the resident interface. You'll be able to have a more seamless communication effort with our community relations department. Three is just the submission of information, whether it's permitting or anything else that you'd be requesting, that will also be applicable, that will also be more seamless and visible by residents. Four is no longer being attached to the 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, point of service and point of location, it'll also be broadening and expanding. And then what more so we're gonna be doing is using the application that Google creates in order for us to start constructing more modules, using the technology that they provide us, that help begin to make even things more easier. So it's not just permitting and stuff, it could be you requesting your renewal or your extension on your permits, or scheduling your inspections. All of this would now be able to be done online, without you having to call the front desk, or things of that nature. See, all these touchpoints, requesting a recycling bin or trash can, garbage mist pickup, a request to speak with a business liaison or neighborhood liaison. We're looking at applications and tools that we can construct for our business liaisons, that'll be able to be offered to our businesses throughout the city of Dearborn. So there's many touchpoints and areas where...
I guess just more specific, thank you for all that information, but as a homeowner, are you gonna be able to sign on to the website with one login, pay your tax bill, pay your water bill, or pay any invoice that the city sends them? Or is that not the vision right now?
It is the vision, it has to be coordinated with the ERP system. And so a portion of this is making sure that the two are communicating and interacting properly.
But part of what we're setting up is to accept the ERP system? So you've asked a complicated question in terms of identity, what we call identity federation. So you come in through the front door, the lobby, which is the website of the city, and we've got some things there for you to do. You can interact with the chatbot, you can, you know, begin the process of licensing and permitting. At some point, when Tyler is done with its work, we can federate the citizen identity between the two systems. But we'll be able to do that extremely easily, because we're building this on a modern platform, and Tyler now builds their software, very similar to how we're building ours, with what they call API-driven layers underneath, where we can federate identities easier. This stuff was super hard 10, 15 years ago to do. It took millions of dollars and lots of effort to do an identity management and identity merging, where you have two of these siloed old legacy systems, and you're, you know, B. Hoffman in one, and B. Hoffman 72 in the other. It was very, very difficult. Now, with these modern platforms that we're building, it's much easier to federate the two across.
That's a long techie answer, the short answer is yes.
Yeah, and I just, for those who aren't techies, I think for my constituents, I think their vision would be an easy place to land and do all of their business with the city. And whether that means, you know, how fragmented it is now, is a challenge. Like you said, you have to walk in the front door for most of the transactions. But for the business transactions, I think the goal should be a single point of entry so that people can transact monetarily with all the departments that they're actively involved with, whether, like I said, tax payments, water payments, whatever it may be, I got an invoice for tall grass or something on a lot. They should be able to do all of that with a single ID and connect all those different aspects of their business with the city. Now whether we get there, you know, out of the gate, or we have that long-term vision, I think for most people, the laypeople out there that do business with the city, that would sort of be their expectation in the very near future after the go-live.
Yeah, and it should be, I agree with you completely. It's a facet of how we build things. We have to wait for Tyler to build the it, for it to become part of the full experience, right?
And so given we're going through the ERP implementation at the same time, there's gonna be a seamless integration between the ERP construction and the tools that Google are building, so we can get to that outcome that you're describing.
Yeah, okay. And my final comment, and I know we want to move forward with this item timely as we can, is, you know, and I said it in the beginning, and I'll end with it, I would really like to propose that the contract contingency is reduced to 5% overall.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other, anybody from the public, yes, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, there is a podium up here. Please address your questions to the council, not to the other party, and no one, please shout out from the...
I wanted to ask, this thing you're doing is very great, birth certificates, would that be something that you can get on a podium?
Birth certificates, Mayor?
In terms of those various city services offered through our clerk's office, yes, but you still have to keep a note, something like a birth certificate such still requires validation of identity, and so that would still have to be integrated as well.
Does anybody in Michigan have the same thing, so we can go look at it, so the city council members will go and just see what's going on before they approve this? That's what they want to see, they want to see something that somebody's doing, they're supposed to go to a workshop or something. You can't just approve something they don't know what's going on.
There are many cities across the country that utilize the Google Workspace, including the state of Michigan, there are many cities such as Pittsburgh that has migrated, doing the cloud migration. We've identified in particular two websites that were really seamless to interact with, Boulder Colorado, Boston, which are the highlights and the benchmarks that we would like to use. Those websites, you can just look up online. And so the idea of being able to submit permits online is something municipalities are doing all across the country, Dearborn just does not do it. If you use your Domino's Pizza app, you can track your pizza when it gets to your door. It should be no difference in terms of tracking where your permit is in the process. And so that technology is widely available and being used. I mean, you know when the Uber Eats driver is outside, it gives you a notice before they actually knock on your door. So we're hopefully trying to get to that level.
That's a great idea. I think the city council should go talk to the people, see if there's any errors, something going on, there's troubling, you know, maybe something leaked out, you know, just go ask, go, take them to workshop, see what they're gonna do. If they like it, they'll come sign and approve. I'm thinking first, you guys should start out with the permits, the water bills, and the taxes, and then go from there. Don't go 100 at one time, let's go 10%, 20, 30, 40, and then everything will be established.
Thank you.
Let's start with the water.
Thank you, please, sir. Sir. You want to address the council, you come up to the front and speak to the council. There's no shouting from in there, you like to speak to someone in the audience, go outside and speak to them. Next resident, please like to come up and speak regarding this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Reno Padre, 20916 Wildwood, Dearborn. I actually didn't come here for this item, but now that I'm here, I have to speak up. So I'm really, really surprised that we are engineering a solution in a council meeting. I did IT since 1986. I launched the first AS400s in this country in 1987, and I did 30 years of IT. I left industry in 2016. One thing that's never changed, you never take a project without a scope, a project plan, understanding where you are today and where you want to go in detail, a strategy. Like, has anyone on council ever led an IT application delivery above a million bucks? Because if you haven't, this is very deep water you're walking into. We need transformation in the city, I agree. Google Workspace, great product. The idea that somebody has committed verbally to rewrite a workflow into an application for you without a functional specification, I don't know how they can do that. So what I'm hearing is, $8 million is way more than it takes to do it, because they're confident they can do it. But what I don't hear is, I don't see the actual scope document with the detail necessary to cost it out. As a resident, I would expect it. As a project leader who's delivered many, many multimillion-dollar projects, there's no way to go forward without it. And anybody who signs off on $8 million bucks on behalf of the city without that kind of clarity, I say as a resident, you're making a mistake. And I say that from experience. I'm not saying that just because I don't like to spend the money, or I don't want you to modernize. I could think, my leadership bells were going off so much back there, that we are jumping into a solution, but we don't really understand where... into a solution, but we don't really understand where we are today or where we're going. So how did we pick the solution? That's like you got the cart ahead of the horse. And you may end up with Google Workspace, I'm not knocking it as a product, they're a great company, everything the gentleman said is true regarding security and data and data centers and so on and so forth. But what I didn't hear is that the city really understands of all of the processes, the business processes you have-
You have thirty seconds.
That all of the processes you have, which one is the biggest bang for the buck? Have you validated what the current state is, do you know where your KPIs are, so that you know that when you make a change, you've actually improved? And I could do this, I could teach a class on this tonight for this group, I'm not gonna do it, but I'm happy to come back and talk to whoever I need to talk to, to make sure you guys are spending your money wisely, and I mean that. I just gave you a hundred thousand dollars of consulting for free.
Thank you, sir. Just for the record, there is no verbal contract with the city's approval in Sarini's contract.
Yeah, I, yeah, but this-
But you said there was a verbal contract-
No, because I'm hearing verbal answers for some issues.
Verbal answers of a conversation that's been happening for nine months. So there's no piecemeal product that's happening before you.
This is not a piecemeal project, and-
The questions might be arising at the council meeting, but I think Google spoke, we've been working on this for over nine months. Council might not have led an IT project for over a million dollars, but that's not their job, our IT director has, as well as my chief operating officers and some of my senior staff.
So if I said, show me the scope document and project plan, someone could let me review it?
Well, it's for-
It's for the administration.
It'll be available publicly, certainly, but-
It should be a public document, right? Because we're gonna spend public funds. Okay, so I'd be glad to take a look at that for you guys.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record?
Eric Helman again, maybe you already know this, the gentleman mentioned it, but what is the annual fee that he was talking about?
The office, mayor, I know that we had the first yours included, do you wanna speak on that?
It's like the subscription fee to use the Google Workspace and the servers and things of that nature, similar to how if you have like Microsoft Office at home, or Office 360, and you have to pay an annual subscription to use that technology, we also have to pay to license those applications so our employees have access.
I understand it, mayor, but what is the fee, what is the amount?
It's based on the subscription, I'm sure, depends how many users you have.
I don't have the presentation in front of me.
I have it. Should I say that?
No.
All right.
Let them answer, he's asking a question.
Hi, council president, Amanda Bright McClanahan, chief operating officer. So the subscription costs for Google Workspace, we are getting one year free, and then we will have two additional years after that. In addition, we'll have security upgrades and additional support through document AI and translation support. All told, the subscription costs on an annual basis will be approximately somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million, which is less than what we pay now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Colom. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So, I guess, to-
Councilman, you have a question?
Yeah, because on the presentation it said 1.1 million, so now we're in 1.5. What's the difference between the number that was given?
I can't hear you, sir.
Oh, what's the difference between the 1.1 that was given to us before and then the 1.5 that we said now?
The 1.1 million was inclusive of everything except the security portion, I rolled in the security portion, annual costs, those are just part of the infrastructure. The 1.1 is the ongoing subscription.
Okay, and is that, is there a term for that, or does that change annually, or how does that get assessed?
We locked it in for three years, and then we will have to go back and renegotiate as you do.
Right, and that was during the prep, that was in the presentation?
We've mentioned that several times.
Several times, in fact, there was many questions on why it was three years when it was, the product was for two.
No, no, okay, right.
Just wanna make sure, I know, but-
Well, I understood that there was a free portion, and then we had one that was at a fixed cost, and then at some point we would go back and ask again for the new price. All right, that's fine. And just to Councilman Abraham's point, since now I'm looking at the city of Boulder, Colorado website, there is not a single sign-on for the, they would go into an individual sign-on for each silo, like one for utility, one for general bill payments, one for ticket payments and stuff like that, so it's not, the website that we're modeling is not necessarily to what you were, what I understood your question to be referring to. And now I do understand what the gentleman said, which was, yes, that specific aspect of a website is extremely complex, and that would be something to discuss when looking at a statement of work and what our IT department is actually going to roll out as part of this project. So like, that's one of the questions that would be addressed in a state of work. And then same thing with like Councilman Elswafi's question, which was, what are our, what I call clients or residents, what are they gonna actually see from what this money is that we're spending? That would also be in a statement of work. So if we want it to be clear. And then, like I said, and the gentleman said everything completely factually, which was, everything that's in the proposal here that's enumerated with a number next to it, a hundred percent in the project. But these are the only things that we know for sure are in the project, which is permitting, security upgrades, the virtual agent, which are phenomenal services, it's just, I don't think that's the only thing that they're gonna be delivering, and that's why I wanted to know what else there is.
So do you have another question?
No, I was just commenting on-
Okay, I know, I just wanna make sure, is there, do you have another question for them since they're here?
Yeah, well, I mean, well, no, 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 I mean, I just wanted physically see the list, because I don't know what to ask about if I don't see a statement of work, which I'm sure is very good stuff, I just wanna see it.
Yeah, I think that we had meetings on this, and we did have presentations that showed, not to the granular that you're asking of what the work is being done. So at this point, we need to move forward, is there any other questions or comments on this? Yeah, Councilman Elswafi? Councilman, can you hear me?
Yes, councilman.
Okay, go ahead, did you have a comment?
I just want to be clear, finished, and, fine. Google, I think Google said, question, so it seems like integrated at some point. And, okay, based with the residents? Hello?
Yeah, we can't, we couldn't understand the question, councilman, we can't hear, it's breaking up.
Okay, let me just repeat it again.
Yes.
It seems like what we're looking to do is integrate the Google platform with an ERP system to allow our residents to interact and then make their daily interactions, whether they're paying their bills or whatnot.
Correct.
Is that correct? We need, correct. Are we paying more for the ERP system, or is this part of the eight million dollars?
No, the ERP system is a separate contract that was approved by council.
So there's no additional dollars that we have to spend?
No, the Google contract before you is not about the construction of the ERP system. Council previously approved the consultant that's on-site assisting us with the ERP choice and development.
I understand the contract that's in front of us, but I'm trying to get to the end state and picture the end state, are the residents able to log on and pay their bills or whatnot, and are we spending more dollars to get to that state? And you're saying we don't have to do that, we're not spending any more dollars?
I'm saying we've approved the ERP contract and you're approving the Google contract, so those dollars you are spending in order to get to that end state. And just for clarification, residents can actually sign on now and pay a water bill, and sign on now and pay a property tax bill. It's just not easy to get to. I wanna clarify that, because I pay my water bill online and I pay my property taxes bill online. With individual accounts.
I'll tell you, I had a, yeah, no, I tell you, I just had an inspection fee that I couldn't pay online, it's got a letter in the mail, and you have to stamp and send it back, so it's not as easy, and that's why we're doing this. But what I wanna make sure is that we're not gonna see another contract in front of us to reach that end state that we're trying to reach of making it easy for our customers, our residents, or our customers to interact with the city. Is that correct?
If I'm understanding your question, correct.
Councilman? Anything else, Councilman Elswafi?
No, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, this time we're gonna be moving the motion forward, is there any, okay, is there any objection to unanimous rule being attached?
Rule call vote, if we're gonna keep the contingency at ten percent.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion.
However you wanna handle it, you're the chair.
Make a motion.
No, well, Mr. Romer, councilman, in order to change the contingency, it cannot be done by the chair, it has to be an offer and support, am I correct, Mr. Romer?
Yeah.
Or the offering, the two parties, can you explain?
Yeah, there'll have to, there'll have to be a motion on the table or the floor to change the contingency for you to move forward in that manner.
Right, it's not in my purview.
That's correct, unless you make the motion yourself.
Correct, just wanted to make sure, clarify, so Councilman Abraham, did you-
Can I have the floor?
Absolutely, councilman.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution as it is in front of us to decrease the contingency from ten percent to five percent overall for both contracts.
Okay, Mr. Romer, so we don't need Councilwoman Herrick or Hamud to address it, it would then go to a vote?
He'll need a support.
Okay, so, support by, so there's a motion made, Mr. Clerk, to reduce the contingency, I believe it's one item in ten percent, is that correct, Mr. Romer?
It's one item with two contracts.
But the ten percent is encompassed as one dollar amount, it's not ten percent for each one, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, it's in our backup, it's ten percent for the first contract. No, I mean, I think we just move it from ten percent to five percent, I don't-
Okay, so the motion is made by Councilman Abraham, supported by Councilwoman Herrick to reduce the contingency as written from ten percent to five percent. And we would need a roll call vote on it, is that correct, Mr. Romer?
Well, you can, you can unanimously-
You can attach, unless there's a request for a roll call, because the motion on the
floor is now to change the contingency to five percent.
Yeah, let's change the contingency, and let's have a roll call vote on that, so can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
No.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
No.
Councilmember Elswafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Sarini.
Yes.
There are five yeas, the motion is passed to move the contingency from ten percent to five percent.
Okay, then, as stated, we would need a roll call vote for the contract as stated, unless there's any other changes. Here in C. and Dunn, so, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote now on the, on the contract with the reduction from ten percent to five percent in contingency?
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Councilmember Elswafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Oh.
I'm sorry, what did I say, Paris?
Can I vote twice?
That was my mistake. Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Now, Councilmember Herrick.
Wait, I already voted on it. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Council President Sarini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
Okay, thank you, and I thank everyone for bearing through on this, and I'd like to thank the Google representatives for appearing here in person and providing us this information that was valuable to the council, appreciate it, both of you, and thank you, mayor. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number twelve, resolution by Councilmember Abraham and Paris authorizing the finance director to establish Project ZT 2607, cybersecurity and infrastructure, and to recognize and appropriate two and a half million dollars in state grant funds, also authorizing the finance director to complete any necessary transitions to receive the revenue and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Michigan Economic and Development Corporation, MEDC, has authorized to provide a grant of 2.5 million dollars to the city for technology upgrades and security improvements throughout the state appropriation grant in October 2022. The community will benefit through improved service delivery, increased accessibility, updated information about city services, virtual operations, including a 24/7 availability for permitting, as well as real-time transaction of documents, announcements, and key information to better support all of our residents' needs. As part of the overall technology upgrades, improvement of security, and the city's systems will ensure the reliability of the services and protection of data. This 2.5 million dollar grant will improve our technology and does not require a match from the city. It is also being requested immediate effect, any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
I would just like to thank the staff team that worked on this 2.5 million dollar grant and the MEDC for working with us to be able to bring this technology. Cybersecurity is something we've all talked about and protecting, and I'm just glad that we're doing this, so thank you very much to Amanda and whoever worked on the team.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak on this item, please step forward.
Can you tell us where the funding came from, the state grant for the, from Wayne County?
This is a state appropriation from the state of the House, so the State House in Lansing in October of 2022.
2022?
They appropriated 2.5 million dollars in a grant, there's no-
So you're gonna open a cyber space up or something?
I'm sorry?
The funding's going to what, like, what's the grant gonna be used for?
We're using it, we were given it from the MEDC for security upgrades and technology, what I just read. But the grant came from October from the State House.
But you haven't used it, and now, or?
No, that's when it was appropriated, we're recognizing it today.
Oh, yeah, okay. So the fund's not in the bank, right?
No, we don't have them in the bank yet.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
All right. Any, would you like to come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Ray Alcaldri, 21916 Wildwood, Dearborn, Michigan, I just take three more minutes, infrastructure and applications are tied together. If you don't know what applications you're building, you don't know what infrastructure you need, okay? It's that simple. So you got 2 million dollars for infrastructure, you got 8 million dollars for a website and for a new workflow for permitting, that's what the 8 million dollars got you. You didn't need to reduce the contingency because there's already probably a 4 million dollar contingency in your workflow program. So it's just, it's just simple stuff, okay? So I'm just, I say it, I know I'm on TV, I know the people here can hear it, and I'm saying it to your faces, if you've never managed a project like this, you're out of your league, I say it to the whole council, I say it to the mayor. And if you couldn't produce a project plan with milestones and specific changes you're making, there was no way to cost it. So that means the cost they gave you has so much buffer, they're confident they can cover it. I'm just trying to school you guys on basic math. That's how the IT world works, you're gonna get your workflow re-engineered, you're gonna get a website, that's what you got for 8 million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaldri, Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, Mr. Alcaldri, I appreciate your comments, but I respectfully disagree that we're out of our league.
Mr. Alcaldri, Mr. Alcaldri, we already had made a statement, please do not speak from the floor, if you'd like to come up and speak, you can come up and address the council. Okay, well, he hasn't, he hasn't spoke, I mean, I don't understand.
So, for me, as one member of this council, our job is not to manage the IT project, just so the public is clear, this body appropriates the funds and makes sure that the money will be spent appropriately. It's the administration's job led by our mayor and the IT department to make sure they deliver value for the money that the taxpayers have spent on this project. So I don't appreciate you coming up here and making accusations that we're out of our league when you haven't even met any of the people in charge of this project. So maybe you should do your homework before you start telling publicly that the people that are here to do a job are not qualified.
Yes, Mr. Alcaldri, you can come up and respond.
Yes, my, my comment, Councilman Abraham, is with regard to leading IT projects, and you said you haven't led one like this, so I said you're out of the league.
No, I did not say that.
Okay.
I never said that.
All right, fair enough. And with respect to not having a doctor in front of you and spending public funds in the best way possible, I don't know how you can make a decision to spend 8 million dollars on a project scope you don't have in front of you.
I do have it in front of me, and we've had tons of bachelor-
Mr. Alcaldri, we've had, it's one person's opinion on what they needed was, I apologize, Councilman Abraham, so if you have another question-
Yes, can I see the, can I see the project document?
Hold on a second, let me finish, there's seven, council-
That's my question.
Mr. Alcaldri, we had seven people here that are elected, one person felt- One person felt that they needed more information, others didn't, okay? There was a vote seven to zero. So, if you'd like something, that you want data that's provided, you can more than welcome. I know why you're here tonight, which is really, you know, I went to the funeral. It's kind of, I really am at awe that a man of your stature is here tonight to receive a proclamation regarding the death and the long life of your mother and is up here chastising the council. So, I just want to, I just wanted to tell you something.
Okay, you spoke about my mother, I'll respond.
I, absolutely, I was at the funeral.
Yes, I was there too.
I understand, but, Mr. Al-Cadre, if you have a question because one person didn't like something that actually voted for it, that's not mean the whole body is incompetent, doesn't know how to do their job.
Councilman, I have a question.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Is there a project plan with deliverables and a functional specification or a scope document for this project? That's my question.
The answer is yes.
Do you want to answer?
And the answer is on January 5th, if you were here at a study session, we delivered a presentation to the council highlighting the project plan and the project scope that was provided to us and the nine months of work that we had gone back and forth with Google. And so, while my council might not have led an IT project, or myself, my IT director has, many members of my senior staff have, and Google has just walked you through every major entity across the world in which they have done similar projects with as well.
Yeah, but that presentation is different than a specification.
Of course, and this is a council meeting, you're asking whether, you're asking, I was satisfied what was received, and I am very confident in my vote.
Then, in front of the public and in front of the TV public, you have, you have made your case. So, thank you for spending our money wisely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Al-Cadre. Anyone else here would like to speak regarding this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, where were we at on that? You have?
We, I read it through, so you just need to know if it's gonna be.
And it's immediate effect, okay. Hearing, is there any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing, hearing and seeing none, unanimous rolls attached, next item, please.
Item 13, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos authorizing the Finance Director to process the addition of one full-time Attorney III position and removal of one part-time position within the budget and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Department of Human Resources and the regionally managed assigned council office is requesting authorization in the fiscal year of 2023 to increase the current budgeted staffing levels by one full-time Attorney III position. The current regional assigned office has one part-time attorney position and would be removed and replaced with a full-time attorney position that would be added. The cost of the new full-time Attorney III position will be approximately $118,882 annually, including benefits. This request currently is for real allocation of $53,362 for the difference in compensation. 100% of this additional funding is covered by an MIDC grant. This position is responsible for authorizing roster attorney pay invoices, attorney scheduling, reviewing attorney requests for expert and investigation services, and the annual MIDC reporting. Further, this position is also responsible for overseeing approximately 150 roster attorneys over across 20 courts. Lastly, a new hire is responsible for any and all other tasks necessary to ensure compliance with MIDC standards pursuant to MIDC standards. These tasks can only be performed by an experienced attorney, therefore, the Attorney III position is appropriate. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, here, Mr. Owen, would you like to step forward?
You guys got two attorneys.
Mr. Owen, come up to the thing and state your name.
Hassan Yun, you guys got two attorneys, two Germany, Germans, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, okay, you guys got two, why do you need three?
Okay, Mr. Owen, this is a contract for the courts, and it's funded by the grant. What's happening is there's 20 cities that is administered through the state, the state, the state courts handle it, and we're the lead, we're the office for it. So, they're asking for an additional attorney that's covered by grants. This is for people that come to court that don't have the ability to pay, and they're.
Oh, you're talking about court-appointed lawyers.
Court-appointed lawyers.
You should address a court-appointed lawyer, you should, you're saying lawyer, I think it's for a city lawyer.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's not for a city lawyer, right?
It is, well, Mr. Romer, the position, if you like to.
It's not for an attorney in my office.
That's what I wanted to know.
But it is an attorney appointed from the courts and through the state, and it is a grant.
It's not through the courts. That used to be with the courts, it's now under human, because of.
Under human resources, right?
Yes, it's under human resources, it's separate from the courts, and it's separate from my office, because my office does the prosecution.
So, human resources needs their own lawyer, am I correct?
No, this is for the, this is for those who need a court-appointed attorney or going from a part-time to a full-time, that is paid for by, in grants from the state of Michigan.
Okay, if it's up to citizens, no problem.
All right, great. Councilwoman Herrick?
Just a request for the administration. I don't believe MIDC is spelled out in our summary page. So, if we, if we explained that it stands for Michigan Indigent. Indigent Defense Commission, at least in the preliminary explanation of what it is, it might make it more clear to the public that it's indigent defense and that it's not our city business that this attorney is gonna be conducting. Thank, thank you, Mr. Yun.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item 14, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud adopting the poverty exemption guidelines for 2023 pursuant to Public Act 253 of 2020, Public Act 620 of 2002, and Public Act 390 of 1994, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, the Department of Assessment is requesting that the Dearborn City Council adapt the poverty exemption guidelines. The Public Act 620 of 2002 requires that local governing bodies set income levels for their poverty exemption guidelines, and those levels shall not be set lower than the city or township than the federal poverty guidelines updated annually in the U.S. Department of Health and Human Resources, which the chart is on the screen. The Department of Assessment is recommending that 2023 household income levels coincide with 150% of the federal poverty guidelines updated annually by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and the proposed changes of the income levels are on that chart. Additionally, the Department of Assessment recommends that the asset level maximum as required by PA 390 of 94 to be set in an interest, an annual interest income maximum of $1,250, and the total asset maximum level of the entire household, including homestead, to be set at $30,000. As required by PA 22, I'm sorry, PA 253 of 2020, the Department of Assessment recommends approved property exemptions be granted at 50% reduction in the payable taxable rate for primary residency, and this is requested immediate effect. We do have someone here for our assessor's office, if you'd like to step forward, so that the residents do understand what is exactly happening here. So, we need your name and your.
I'm Dawn Bierich from the assessor's office. Basically, this is the same thing that we, every time that we have to, we have to request the new poverty guideline levels with the council. Most of the communities are actually set at federal guidelines. They're just way too low, I mean.
Okay, so, the question is, I'm trying to make sure the residents understand.
Yeah.
The federal guidelines, if someone needs the federal.
Okay, so, like, for, just, for example, the federal poverty guidelines for a family of one is $13,590, that's the most you can make for a person. One person can make $13,590 a year. We're requesting it to be, what is it, I'm sorry.
It's $18,305, we understand.
Okay.
$20,385.
Twenty.
$22.
Yeah, exactly.
$20,000?
So, it's $2,385.
So, I guess for us, we want the residents to understand, once you reach this poverty, if you reach this level, what is the benefit for the resident? So, that's, I think, the biggest question.
Okay, so, basically, if you are considered low-income, we want you to come in, bring us your income tax, you know, you have to have bank statements, you need.
The question is, if they are considered low-income, what is the benefit?
We would drop the taxes by 50% if you qualify.
Mr. Clannam, did you have something to add for that?
Yeah, so, through you, Council President, this is a process where our residents can come in with an application, and our team from the assessor's office can actually assist them to make sure that they have the documentation they need, help them to, you know, identify those materials that might be missing. If they can get those materials in and they meet these guidelines, which, as Dawn pointed out, are actually more generous than what the state requires. We allow up to that 150% of the federal poverty level. That allows our residents to have that reduction in their property taxes by 50%. As a point of reference, we've seen that the federal poverty level at 100% doesn't appropriately recognize what it costs to stay in a home, to raise your family. So, the city has long recognized that discrepancy and had this level of 150% FPL. With your approval, we'll be able to continue with this process and be able to move forward as we get ready for March Board of Review.
Right, also, for this, for the resident, if they did qualify, their reduction would be 50% of the city portion or of the entire tax bill, or what?
It's the entire tax.
So, all across the county and millage, okay?
Correct.
Also, I wanted to make sure the residents knew that, because there's a lot of people that don't, that have missed this deadline to come in.
And then base.
Also, for, let me ask you a question, yeah. So, also, the other question I have is for military personnel, because we have a lot of military personnel in the state.
Yes.
What do they qualify for?
We actually have a, through the state tax commission, we have an affidavit for disabled veterans. If somebody qualifies as a disabled veteran, 100%, so you have to be 100% unable to work due to a, it has to be.
We understand the qualifications.
Got it.
Let's go to the benefit, what's the benefit?
That is zero.
No taxes.
Basically, no taxes.
For a disabled veteran?
Property taxes.
Property taxes.
Property taxes or an unmarried spouse.
Of a disabled veteran?
Yeah, so, it's basically a widow.
Yeah, this is why I wanted you to come in today, and I know the assessor wasn't available. We heard he's out and hopefully on sick.
He has COVID.
Okay, thanks, and I hope he returns in good condition.
Yeah.
I wanted the residents to understand, there's a lot of calls the council gets for poverty exemptions, and they don't understand the timeframe in which, because there is a specific timeframe in which they must qualify for this. So, I wanted to make sure our residents knew and put the chart on there so they understand they have a limited window, and then this can be granted, because as you indicated, there's multiple municipalities in Wayne County and state agencies that will be affected by this, so, I appreciate.
Oh, I was just going to let you know.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, basically, as soon as we get this approved, we'll have, we'll start mass producing the forms, we'll have them available at the March Board to pass out. But we do like to actually process them at our July and December boards.
Okay, Councilman Paris, thank you.
If I could just briefly, thank you for being here, and thank you, Council President, for asking these questions, because we need to get this information out. But this is not a new program, this is not something new that we have done.
And we have everything available at the assessor's office, and we're definitely there.
What I wanted to point out, so people hear about it, this is not something new for us. I mean, we've had this program ongoing for a period of time.
Correct.
Okay, and I just want to make sure, too, to understand that there is a lot of training that the assessor's office and all your employees have to go through to make sure that you are totally accurate and totally understanding what is required from our residents, and more than anything else is to assist people in what they can and can't do. And just a task that I want to make sure, you know, sometimes government could maybe do a little bit better, get the information out there, so people that are really in need of this, they're aware of it, and they know where to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it, Council, that's why we had, this is an annual request by the council. I wanted to make sure that, of course, last year, we were certainly immense in a first-time budget with a shortfall of over $13.5 million from our residents voting down a millage. So, I wanted to make sure this year that we did bring this forward. I do appreciate you recognizing that, we want to make sure the residents know that it's available. You have a form?
I also wanted to let you know that we actually have printouts of how to get your letters from the VA offline. So, and all the information on how to contact them, because a lot of people don't know how to get their letters.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilman El-Sawafi, you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, just a quick question, how do people apply to walk me through the process?
Sure, for which application? For the hardship application?
For the poverty tax exemption, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, basically, they would come in and, or, they can call us, and we can mail them an application. It's roughly about seven pages long. We ask for a lot of, a lot of personal information, but I will guarantee you that it never goes anywhere other than our office. And any paperwork that comes to us is actually locked up. We don't want anything getting out, you know, nothing will ever be copied, nothing will ever be available to the public.
Okay.
And then, so, basically, from there.
I get it.
Thank you, Councilman, did you have, is that, Councilman?
Yes, yeah, I do have a question.
Okay.
The resident would have to drive in or mail it in, there's no way to fill it out online?
Not yet, we're actually looking to do that process, it would be.
There, can you jot that down as part of the plan? Yeah.
Yes, he's nodding, he's gonna jot it down.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know if Brad is in the room. No.
No.
Gotcha, thank you so much.
The only thing I could foresee is how would you get documents online? That's the only problem.
Okay.
So.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions or, no, we're good, you're good, you can go home, if you like. Yep, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and, thank you, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached, next item, please.
Item 15, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud awarding a one-year contract with two one-year renewal options to the Arab American News in an amount not to exceed $15,000 annually for a secondary publication of official city notices and records, which shall be charged to the general fund city clerk publishing budget, also authorizing the Finance Director or designated to appropriate $7,500 for the remainder of fiscal year 2023 to clerk's budget and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, the 34 city councils requesting approval for a secondary publication for official city notices and records for 2023. The purchasing sat on a competitive bid for bilingual newspaper circulation in our city, and the Arab American News was the most responsive and responsible bidder. The word of this contract will, shall be for one initial year term with two one-year renewal options at mutually agreed pricing. The proposal word as a secondary publication is to provide the city of Dearborn residents with a newspaper resource that is also translated in the Arabic language. This request is for 70, is for not more than $7,500 and a yearly amount to be, not to exceed $15,000 and shall be charged to the general fund clerk, city clerk publishing budget. And I know we have our purchasing director here, and we had some questions. So, Mr. Rogowski, I know that all of, your name and.
Yeah, good evening, Council, Mark Rosiski, purchasing manager.
So, I know you weren't here to the, at the council, but I know that you, I do appreciate myself, and I'm sure my colleagues do, your very responsive time regarding all the questions we had, and I know that I read all the responses, so, at this point, I'd like to see if my colleagues have any questions or comments regarding this one. Councilman Abraham?
Just because I think we got some more information on this item just before the meeting and since Thursday, can we just clarify that included in the cost is the bilingual publication of the notices?
Included in the cost is only one language, it will be printed in Arabic, and the translation fee has been waived. In order to print in both English and Arabic, it would be double the cost.
Thank you. Any other question?
Okay, so, I appreciate that, just for the record, it has been, it was bid out twice?
Twice, correct, the first time we posted it, no bidders, second time we posted it, only one bidder.
Okay, and the bid request was for bilingual Arabic circulation?
We did, actually did not ask for a language specification.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just, just like our primary publication, similar post.
Okay, similar post.
Yes, no, no language exception.
Okay, good. All right, so, any other questions or comments on this one? Yeah, Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Okay, so, just to be clear for anybody who hasn't followed the discussion on this, the primary publication where city legal notices are posted currently is the Dearborn Press and Guide, and that's obviously, that's printed in English. And so, what the administration and the council was seeking to do was make those same legal notices available in Arabic for those folks who might.
notices available in Arabic for those folks who might not be able to understand the English language and have the opportunities to see things like when the city is selling city-owned properties. And that's why we are looking to have it published in Arabic. Ideally, because the Arab American News is printed in English and Arabic, it would be, the same information would be in both languages, because I know that makes people more comfortable when they see, and the Dear, having worked for the Dearborn Public Schools, I know that's something that we always considered, was so that people would feel comfortable if they didn't speak the other language, they could kind of assume the same thing was available in the other language from what they were reading, if it looked similar and was in the same publication, excuse me, in the same publication. So I think it's, it's too bad that it's in two different places, that people can't see it side by side, but in the interest of being cost effective, I certainly don't want to have to pay twice the price to have it in the Arab American News in both languages, since it's already available elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this from my colleagues? Councilwoman Paris?
Yeah, if I could, just so folks understand, and everybody here on council was at the committee of the whole, where a number of questions were raised. I just want to bring up, I understand where this is coming from and what the benefit could be, but I also understand that we did have some discussion and brought up about the Michigan law pertaining to this, the 6.911051 of Act 247 that requires us to go ahead and have one publication, one newspaper, that has in general circulation, being able to, you know, meet the needs of our community. And just looking back on it, and I know the name was already mentioned, I don't want to mention the other name besides what's on our agenda here tonight, but we've had the same publication since 2011. And it just seems to me to be able to accomplish maybe the same thing. We're talking about our city website, we're talking about upgrading and doing a lot of things online. I know it was discussed and it was said that we used, what is the, American Legal for our ordinances?
Yeah, American Legal Publishing.
And those of us that have been on it a number of times, it's not exactly the easiest to go on there, but our public notices don't just automatically show up. I would hope that the administration in the future uses our city website to go ahead and publish and get with the times now to publish both in English and Arabic on our city website, you know, similar to what the city charter is doing for a lot of different things, you know, making it accessible. But just me looking at the whole situation, I'm not comfortable when we still have time, you know, there is section 710 of our charter that states that every year by February, we need to make sure that we announce who the newspaper would be, you know, on a yearly basis. We still have time to do that. You know, we have a number of papers, including the one that's before us today and the one that's already performing the services. Why can't we still just have one and let both these entities go ahead and bid on it? And just like anything else that we do for procurement, go ahead and best bid or the lowest bid. And on top of that too, in our procurement ordinance, we do encourage local Dearborn-based businesses, veterans-owned vendors, diversity procurement that we have for minorities, and we can use that. You know, we want to see our city businesses thrive and give them an opportunity. I get that, I understand that. So I would have no problem whatsoever with the entity that we're talking about today, go through the procurement process and become the official newspaper of the city of Dearborn, at least until the next year or a number of years that some sort of a contract.
If I may, Councilmember, since, I think you said 2011, Press and Guide, we've actually bid this out, I believe, at least twice since then, and I believe each time has only been one bidder for the primary publication.
Okay, and I understand that, and if that's the case, that's fine. But in my feeling, is why do we need to go ahead and have another secondary publication when we already have one? And anybody that would meet the state requirements would be able to do that, get it online and go through the bid process and could be possibly selected. I don't think that we need more than one, and that's only my opinion, I'm only speaking for myself.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. I think the genesis is that the paper of record right now does not print in a bilingual language. Does not print in any other language except English. So I think that was the genesis of it. But I'm sure when the bid should be going out soon, because we have it by the second.
Correct, towards the.
Yeah, when it is, make sure you inform.
No, there's a renewal, there's a renewal right now.
Oh, there's a renewal?
There's one renewal remaining for the Press and Guide.
And then it'll go out for bid.
Correct, towards the end of this year, I already have a note that we'll put it out for bid.
Yeah, and make sure you notify the council office, so we can let all the papers know.
You got it.
Someone might have that ability, which the council is, I do agree with what he's indicating, is that if one paper can provide both services, it might be better.
Yeah.
But right now, currently, this award here will take care of a secondary aspect and a bilingual aspect, and then we could go forward once the renewal is completed from there. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Hamud?
I just have a question as to kind of what the councilman was referring to. Can we add bilingual to the bid specs?
That was one of my questions, and maybe Jeremy can assist me with that, I'm not 100% sure on that, and that's why I did not include it when I posted it.
So your designated paper has to print in English, but you could, if you're looking to add a bilingual feature to that as the designated paper, as long as it does English, it can do others as part of it.
Yeah, that was my question. So the answer is yes?
You would have to be able to do both.
Correct.
So English and whatever other language you'd want to do.
Right.
But you could include that in the RFP, provided the posting, the legal notices is in English, that's the state law.
So who would direct that aspect of the RFP, administration or council?
Administration directs the RFP.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman Paris, yeah, absolutely.
And thank you, and I just want to reiterate, the state requirement is only one. Our city charter also says a publication. A indicates to me one. We can go two, that's within our prerogative to do that, but I don't believe it's necessary, and I think we can do a better job as a city to put that publication of any ordinances or any notices, you know, sometime, hopefully we'll get there soon, you know, on our own city website, so we can publicize it in both languages also as another additional resource. Thank you.
Councilman Abraham?
Just a quick one. So thank you for all the information, I know this is not a huge item, but it's an important item to our community. I think we have a unique opportunity here to fill a gap that is obvious. We need publications in the Arabic language in our community. I think we also have an opportunity as the RFP gets prepared in the fall to either commingle the two into a single contract or bid them side by side, where perhaps you select English and Arabic notices with the same newspaper, or like we do for other contracts, you break it up, and if it's more cost effective to do it separately, we have the opportunity to do it separately. But I definitely think we should explore all of those in the fall.
Absolutely, I will, I'll make note of that, and we'll have it included. We'll reach out to council when we're ready to post the next list.
Thank you very much, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Any comments from the floor? Please step forward.
I have to lawyer a couple of questions.
Mr. O'Neal, Mr. O'Neal, you need to address, you can't, you can't ask the lawyer, you ask the council.
All right.
I know, but I'm going to make it clear.
I understand.
Okay, go ahead.
We're not going to go through this.
Right.
Would it be a conflict of interest if somebody is on the board of AIPAC to vote on this?
The AIPAC is not in front of us?
AIPAC.
Yeah, Arab American News is in front of us.
But he's, he's on the member, his father is on the member, Osama and him are partners. It makes it a conflict of interest.
Okay, Mr. O'Neal, it would make it a conflict of interest, in my opinion, if the Arab American News was owned or owned the AIPAC, which is a nonprofit, they do not own it.
He does own AIPAC, he's the founder of AIPAC, him and Osama.
AIPAC is an.
I've seen, I looked it up, I did my homework.
I know, usually you do your homework.
Oh, I've done my homework on this one.
On this one, this one, it's not even close.
Yes.
There was a competitive bid, then which, two times it went out, and this was the only newspaper that bid.
Most of the Muhammad was the, and she put it on the, on the agenda, it's right here, it says, we'll put it on the agenda.
Right, what I said is it was a bid, there was a bid.
He put it on the agenda.
I understand. You're asking me if there's a conflict of interest? Arab American News does not own AIPAC, AIPAC is a separate entity.
Who owns AIPAC?
So, I can't answer that, you'd have to do some more research.
He's a member on AIPAC, Osama Siblani is a founder of AIPAC, everybody knows this. Could you please ask that, can you ask the lawyer if it's a conflict?
No, I'm not going to ask him that. That's not a conflict, there's no conflict.
How do you know if you're not even asking the lawyer? You're not even asking the lawyer.
This is the Arab American News.
It doesn't matter, there's a conflict of interest, you're not allowed to sit there and give somebody a contract, and I know this.
I'm going to ask, okay, Mr. Omer, do you want me to restate that, or do you understand the question there for the, that the, Mr. O'Neal has for the spotty?
I, I understand the question, and I'll answer it this way. Number one, I don't answer questions from the public. My client is the council and the administration, so you can ask me all the questions you want that doesn't entitle you to an answer. Number two, based off the, I don't have any information in front of me based off what you're saying. I'm not going to give you an opinion when I don't have any information. You're entitled to say what you want, I have nothing related to what you're saying, so I can't answer the question affirmatively or negatively based off what you're saying.
So there's no conflict of interest, is what you're trying to tell me? I need to know if.
I have no answer for you.
Because here's the thing, the feds are watching, like they say, I want to know if there's a conflict of interest, just tell me, is there a conflict?
I, I answered you.
I'm asking, you said no, right?
I asked you, I answered you, I'm the president of the council, I told you no. I asked the city attorney, he made his statement, I can't speak.
He didn't say no, he said I can't answer it.
Do you have any other questions for the council? Do you have any?
If you guys approve it, babe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Neal.
It's up to you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Any objection to unanimous roll be attached? Rule call vote? Mr. Clerk, can we have a rule call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Paris?
No.
Councilmember El-Sawafi? Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Inos?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Abraham?
Yes.
There are five yeas if the resolution passes.
Okay, with the, okay, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 16, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris, renewing the city's membership with the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, also known as SEMCOG, in the amount of $14,406 for the period of June 15, 2022 through June 15, 2023.
Okay, and this request is authorizing to renew the citywide membership with the Southeast Michigan Council of Governors, Governments, which is SEMCOG, for a period of June 15, 2022 to June 15, 2023. SEMCOG serves local units of government and educates seven regional counties, including Livingston, McComb, Monroe, Oakland, St. Clair, Washtenaw, and of course Wayne, and is a strong advocate for state and federal legislators. SEMCOG is providing training, is provided for elected officials on a variety of topics and important to the future of the Southeast Michigan region. Membership provided, provides the city of Dearborn with information to aid local and regional decision-making via analysis, analysis of local growth and development trends and studies on government efficiencies and collaboration, among other things. The cost of the citywide membership is $14,406, with which $1,290 higher than our cost for 2020 fiscal year of $13,116. Membership dues for the fiscal '23 are already budgeted and appropriated and, are already budgeted in this fiscal year. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Dearborn's involvement with the Southeast Michigan Council of Government provides numerous benefits, as Council President just outlined. In particular, some of the data that's collected and shared between all the cities and municipalities that participate, we can collaborate on things like watershed management, which is so critical here in Dearborn, as we're at the bottom of the Rouge watershed and we see flooding here. Through SEMCOG, we can collaborate with other municipalities further upstream and in the area to address regional problems like flooding, and they also provide training for elected officials. We have valuable networking opportunities to meet our colleagues in other cities, and those training sessions are free for our elected officials, and I've taken advantage of them, they're very, very beneficial, and I appreciate that we are renewing our membership with SEMCOG. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues?
I'll just make one quick comment, Councilman. You know, the membership fee is about $14,000. Last year, we received a $40,000 grant from SEMCOG, which is more than triple, you know, the membership fee, and so we're seeing bang for our buck. I'm also the current co-chair for SEMCOG's Green Task Force with the mayor of Rochester Hills. Second meeting of three has already happened on the 3rd of March, we're producing a great, you know, overall presentation for Southeast Michigan.
Yeah, thank you very much. On my time on the council, I think they've been invaluable, and we've reached out to them as a council many times for information, especially during the marijuana situations and what we needed from them and what's going on in the state, so I do appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, for that aspect of the return on investment, I know it's always been there. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, any objection, unanimous roll? Hearing and seeing none? Unanimous roll be attached, next item.
Item 17, resolution by council members Herrick and Abraham, concurring in the appointment of Brent C. Makowski to the Commission on Disability Concerns with a term ending June 30, 2025 and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this is a recommendation for approval by appointment of Mr. Brent C. Makowski to serve on the City of Dearborn Commission of Disability Concerns for a three-year term, the term ending June 30, 2025, and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? I just wanted to thank Mr. Makowski for his ability to serve a volunteer position and a very critical position for our city of Dearborn. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you. I appreciate that Mr. Makowski is also joining the commission. He brings a wealth of experience in the services that are need for people with special needs. The, we appreciate that Step is headquartered here in Dearborn, and the nonprofit organization provides services to help those with special needs live independent lives, their home life skills, as well as job employment opportunities. And so with the services they provide and him serving on the Disability Concerns Commission, we'll be able to better serve the population of Dearborn overall. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And just to remind our residents, this is something the council passed last week, last agenda, that allowed a member of this qualifications who's not living in the city of Dearborn, who works in the city of Dearborn, to participate. So I know there's a lot of question regarding whether people are able to, but this gentleman's resume is phenomenal, and I'm glad that he's willing to serve in the capacity, so thanks. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll be attached, next item, please.
Item 18, resolution by council president Protem Herrick, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Mickey Patrick and requesting immediate effect.
Mickey Patrick was born on August 4, 1938, and peacefully passed away on January 9, 2023, at the age of 84. He was the beloved son of the late Van Patrick and Evelyn Patrick Leonard. Mickey was survived by Judith, his loving wife of 60 years, and many dear friends and colleagues. Mickey and Judy lived many years in Dearborn, where they developed deep friendships with neighbors prior to moving just a few years ago to their home in Plymouth. Mickey graduated high school from Culver Military Academy in Indiana, and then attended Michigan State University, where he developed his lifelong reputation as an avid MSU fan. He went on to own Patrick Ford dealership in Monroe, Michigan. His friends and neighbors admired Mickey's personal fleet of unique, high-performance vehicles. Mickey was the president of the Van Patrick Foundation and chairman of the highly-regarded Ford Van Patrick Invitational Golf Tournament for twenty-five years. Mickey was proud to be appointed to the Dearborn Parks and Recreation Commission by the late Michael A. Guido. Mickey's father, Van Patrick, was a nationally acclaimed sports broadcaster who had supported and served many years on the Dearborn Parks and Recreation Commission until his death in nineteen seventy-four. Mickey worked with the commission to recognize his father's contributions to Dearborn's recreation programs by establishing the Van Patrick Memorial Award, which is presented annually by the commission to the city's High School Athletes of the Year. Mickey was instrumental in the process of evaluating the nominees and selecting the winners. Mickey served on the Recreation Commission with distinction until stepping down in two thousand fourteen. In recognition of Mickey's long service to Dearborn, the Parks and Recreation Commission created and now annually presents the Mickey Patrick Award to honor the city's outstanding middle school students. Mickey Patrick was known as a generous man with a keen sense of humor and he lived life to the fullest. He's never, he never forgot his friends and he kept them for life. He will be dearly missed by his family, friends, and neighbors. To all, we offer our most sincere condolences.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any unanimous roll will be attached? Next item.
Item nineteen, resolution by Councilman Hamud, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Haji Al-Qadri and requesting immediate effect.
Haji Adibi Abdul Rahman Al-Qadri was born May fifteenth, nineteen thirty-one, in the small village of Rafid in the Baqah Valley of Lebanon. Sadly passed away on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. She was preceded in death by her beloved husband, Muhammad Abdul Jaleel Al-Qadri. Together, they raised eight beautiful children, Fayruz, Haji Ikram, Haji Layla, Haji Yusuf Joe, Haji Amira, Haji Abdul Rahman Ray, Jinnan Gigi, and Abdul Kader, also known as Kader. They were also blessed with thirty grandchildren and many great-grandchildren. Since arriving to this country in the late nineteen forties under hers and her late husband's efforts, the family has been involved in the founding and expansion of mosques in both Dearborn and Windsor and efforts to nurture and support the budding Muslim community in and around Metro Detroit. Her interests went further and included the wider local community of Dearborn, maintaining solid relationships with top officials in Dearborn. As the daughter of the mayor of her village back in Lebanon, she carried her sense of leadership and duty to America, making sure both neighborhood concerns and successes were shared with city officials to help make Dearborn all it could be. Haji Adibi Abdul Rahman Al-Qadri was known as Fireball, fiercely loving and protective of her family, coordinating and running the household while supporting and staying involved in her children's lives. In the early years of Dearborn at a time when many Middle Eastern bakeries, sweet shops, and restaurants simply did not exist, she enjoyed cooking bread, baklava, and many other Mediterranean dishes by hand. And many will agree that her cooking skills remain unmatched to this day. Her other hobbies included a superb green thumb that hearkens back to her Bad Valley farming roots, producing significant indoor gardens, and the pastime of knitting scarves and blankets for the family. Her positive attitude, words of wisdom, generosity, and welcoming nature will be dearly missed by her family, friends, and neighbors. She was loved, respected, and admired by all who knew her. We offer our most heartfelt sympathy and sincere condolences to the family of the deceased.
If I may, Council President, just on that one.
Mayor?
First and foremost, to the family, inshallah, to Islamun, I hope God grants you patience during the difficult time. I did not know Haji Adibi personally, but I grew up with her grandchildren. I graduated with Muhammad, who went on to work for Google, which is a funny fact. But you don't have to know Haji Adibi to know when you meet the grandchildren, the character that they grew up with, to know the type of person that she was, to instill that type of character in her children that's passed on to her grandchildren. So certainly, the Al-Qadri family is well-respected and known throughout our community in every facet of every major institution in our city. And so we extend our condolences and hope you lean on us like the family that we are.
Thank you. Any unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item twenty, resolution by council president Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Hussein Saab and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you. Hassan Saab was born on March fourth, nineteen fifty-three and passed away January ninth of this year. Hassan is a first-generation immigrant who settled in Dearborn in the late nineteen seventies. As a pioneer businessman on the east side of Dearborn, he opened up several butcher shops alongside his brothers. He also put himself through college, believing in higher education. He obtained a bachelor's degree in engineering, a master's degree in electrical engineering, and an MBA. Eventually, he settled in the field of Middle Eastern cuisine industry and subsequently opened one of the first Lebanese restaurants in Dearborn, Cedar Land on Warren Avenue. He's a proud father of four highly educated children. He took pride in raising his family, putting them through their education and watching them excel in their respective fields. His oldest son is an orthopedic surgeon. His other son is an immigration lawyer, cosmetic dentist, and a surgical assistant. He was a virtuous individual, constantly donating to charity and helping individuals in the need as best as he could. Through his hard work, morals, and ethics, he taught his children, as well as everyone that had interaction with him, the importance of working hard every single day to achieve your dreams. This, along with his exceptional faith in God and his desire to uphold traditional family values, set him apart from others. He was a loving father, effective businessman, and above all, a devout Muslim. His passing shook the hearts of everyone. He had the pleasure of knowing, and his legacy will be remembered for generations to come, not only amongst his family, but throughout the greater Dearborn community as well. And to all his family, our condolences.
Thank you.
Unanimous roll. Mr. Council, I'm sorry. Mayor Hamud?
Thank you so much, Council President. Those who have never met Haji Hassan, I mean, you missed out on such an incredible personality. In fact, he was in my office just a few weeks before his untimely passing, where he was discussing what we can do to improve the public safety along the corridor where Cedar Land Restaurant is. And so the projects that we planned on and agreed to are still products that we plan to execute. But to his children, who are of the greatest character, we extend our condolences. And I think we lost many loved ones this last week. And for those who were active throughout the mosques and such, it was, you know, unfortunate procession after procession of deeply loved ones that have now departed. And so to all, we extend our condolences. Inshallah, to Islamun, we pray that God grants you patience in this difficult time.
Thank you, Mayor. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Nothing further from the clerk's office.
Okay, so at this time, we will open up to council comments. I have a few and I'm sure I'll share with my colleagues. Just a quick note, as many of us, and Mayor is hoping you could shed light on this. I apologize, I didn't brief you before on it, but the food truck and the social media regarding Ramadan this year has becoming a tremendous amount of calls I've received myself. I've directed them to the clerk's office. Mr. Clerk, they said, "You're still waiting on us." Is that true? So Mayor, I know it's fluid, but can you speak to the process as far as right now where we're at? And when do you expect that the people can come and get a license?
Absolutely. And so in our second year's effort in trying to ensure that we uphold public health and public safety across the city, first and foremost, for anybody seeking to operate a private festival like we saw happen last year, they have to come through, gain council approval in order for them to be able to open and operate. I know that some have come and pulled applications to get that process started. And just like last year, administration will make sure that that process goes through, through a fair and equal process, making sure that they get everything that they need. As it pertains to vendors that might not be participating in a private festival but looking to participate throughout the city, the city is doing its best to try to identify parcels of land that are away from largely resident areas where we can enforce traffic, make sure their public health, public safety concerns are addressed, and permit them in those areas temporarily for the month of Ramadan using the public land. That will also come before city council. And so just wanted to give those updates. You can come in, I think permits@dearborn.gov is the email you can use. And put the header Ramadan, and that's how you can try to engage to be a licensed food vendor. If you're going through a festival, work through the festival organizer.
Right.
That's the best way to do it.
But if they're not working through a festival organizer...
Email permits@dearborn.gov.
Okay, are they actively giving the permits now or not yet?
So when you email, our economic development team will engage you to get you licensed and permitted and set up.
Started, okay.
Correct.
So it is going on right now, okay. All right, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure and update for that. Then I did want to give some good news for the council's job and the mayor as well. So I frequently visit the business districts myself. Many of you that do know, my family's one of the first Middle Eastern restaurants in the south end of Dearborn and then in Greenfield. So I love to go out and I was had the great pleasure of having one of my nephews fly in from Virginia with his wife. And we went to several restaurants on Warren Avenue. Tremendous vibe and we stopped at, I don't want to name the name, but very popular pastry place. I love pastries, I can't deny. And ice cream, pistachio ice cream in front of you wants to know. But great, great interaction with the residents. And I'll tell you, they love to see people from the government out in the community. But it's more important, sometimes you don't know what's gonna happen. And sometimes I have somebody run up to me and say, "Hey, gotta tell you something." So this was a good one. And I did have a resident older gentleman that said, "You know, in the first few months, we weren't sure how you guys are gonna do with the new administration, the mayor, and the council." And now they feel, his words were at ease. "We feel that everything's pointing in the right direction and we know you guys are going in the right way." It's a tremendous feeling, not only because I was there with my kids and they're always ducking in case, you know, somebody's complaining. They were actually happy. And I wanted to make sure that my colleagues heard that, the mayor heard that. It's not easy to cut thirteen and a half million dollars off a budget. It's not easy to find solutions. It's easy to find the problem. The real leadership finds the answer. Right? And that's what this is about. It's not for the, none of us here, we're all part-time and all are successful in many of their fields. From small business to accounting to like engineering, public sector, whatever you do. I want the residents to know that we take our job serious, this council and under the mayor and the administration. We do believe we're going in the right direction. We do believe we have a tremendous city. We are lucky that our retirees can look and come and complain because we have seventy and eighty percent of our funding, where other cities down the road have zero. So to me, I want to make sure that people know that there is good things. So when you go out in the community, there's a lot of people that have positive things to say. And I wanted to share that with my colleagues and of course, Mayor, under your leadership. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of quick notes. Looking forward to warmer weather later this year. The city of Dearborn is hiring lifeguards. We always have need for lifeguards indoors at the Performing Arts Center. But to staff our pools and staff Camp Dearborn for swimming. If you know somebody who's interested in being a lifeguard, know any swimmers in the school programs or private programs, encourage them to look at being a lifeguard for the city of Dearborn in the coming months. And before we have swim season, we have potholes. So I appreciate that the city of Dearborn has an email address where you can report potholes on any street in Dearborn that you see. So if you email potholes@dearborn.gov and say where you saw the pothole, the address, the street it's on, the city will figure out whether it's a city street or a county road that needs, and they'll forward that to the appropriate authorities to deal with those potholes as we get into the pothole season. On a more fun note, the Daddy Daughter Dance is back at the Performing Arts Center. And it's gonna be held on February fourth, so before our next council meeting. If you're interested, go online and find out more information about their, the theme this year is Alice in Wonderland. But that's always a really popular event for dads and their daughters of all ages. And sometimes dads will bring several daughters or just one, but it's a lovely, lovely event. And coming up right after our next council meeting, the Dearborn Aglow Awards. Thank you to all the residents who decorated their homes the holidays this year. It certainly, especially when there's no snow, at least we have something to remind us of the winter holidays. The awards for the Dearborn Aglow will be at the Studio A at the Performing Arts Center on Wednesday, February eighth. And finally, I just wanted to note that for anybody who's interested in getting perspective of the two mayors, Dearborn and Dearborn Heights mayors, the Chamber of Commerce is holding their annual Tale of Two Cities event. This year, it's gonna be a breakfast at the Performing Arts Center in the Lincoln Ballroom on Tuesday, February seventh. And information about that event, tickets can be purchased through the Chamber of Commerce website. So I look forward to hearing our esteemed mayor and the presentation that he makes because we all know there's a lot of excitement having, here in Dearborn. But I also like to hear what Mayor Bill Bassey from Dearborn Heights has to say and compare the two mayors. They work really well together, but they do have different approaches. So I look forward to hearing both their presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else from my colleagues would like to speak? Councilwoman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make mention, just for clarification, maybe for the mayor, is the Ramadan festival that was recently discussed on social media between the two-acre property between the two decks, you know, at the Downtown Development Authority area. I just wanted to make sure that I believe my understanding is correct, that that decision is from the Promotions Committee and so on, from the Downtown Development Authority? Does that have to come before us in regards to like the food truck issue?
So it's not a festival. That two acres is just identifying a public parcel of land where food vendors can participate. As it pertains to what comes before council or not, I know like the festival, the private festival, that approval has to come before council. As it pertains to the use of that public parcel of land, I defer to legal as we authorize food trucks. Traditional permitting and licensing of food trucks doesn't come before council. We follow our economic development team, and they obviously have to get certified by Wayne County Public Health as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious because of the way that it's been posted recently and discussed, that the, that would come before the West Downtown Dearborn Development Authority as part of their promotions? To be able to use that property between these structures?
That property is owned by the city, not by the DDA. You don't need permission from the DDA to operate within that authority. The DDA would expend DDA dollars, but we have no requests at the DDA to expend dollars.
So because that involves just the food trucks then, so that would not have to come to us for an approval like an event? Because we're giving them an area of two acres to go ahead and have a number of food trucks? I just wanted to make sure what the process would be so I have an understanding.
Yeah, from us right now, what we communicated to the public was if you're interested in being a food truck that wants to sit on a public parcel, so send us an email. And that is just to try to decrease any congestion on any private parcels throughout main corridors like we've seen in years prior. As it pertains to what comes before council or not, of the use of that land, I'm assuming is what you're referring to. Again, I default to legal to make that determination. I'm not a hundred percent certain to give you that answer right now.
Okay, hence why I'm asking, because I'm not certain myself, so.
Yeah, I think we'll review, and if it has to come before council, we'll certainly bring it.
Okay. The only other thing that I wanted to address, only because it was brought before council during public speaking at the very beginning, I know my name was mentioned, and I feel that I have to address that only because my name was mentioned in regards to the employee healthcare. And the reason why I'm bringing it up is I want to make certain that people understand that we as a council speak on issues and we vote on various things. So it's not me in particular that should be addressed that I am for or against as opposed to any of my colleagues because we all jointly have our own voice here on council. So to address that issue. But what I will say is I've been really trying to be kind of silent on this because it does affect a lot of our city retirees. I've had a lot of inquiries on it for explanations. But it's a little bit precarious sometimes because of my function here on council. And I will fully disclose, I am a retired city employee, you know, from the police department. But I will say that there is a lot of frustration out there. I see the complaints. I've listened to the complaints. And quite honestly, I have a lot of complaints. I spent five hours on the phone recently trying to resolve some issues. I also had a number of phone calls to both the healthcare provider. I called the advocate. I called our city benefits. And what was surprising to me is even calling the healthcare, they had no idea. I mean, they didn't even know my wife's address and said that it wasn't supplied. I will also say too, like I said, I spent five hours on the phone, just one day, trying to get answers, and it was very difficult to do so. The advocate that I called told me, very nice person, tried to help me, what I could understand, told me it would take about two or three days to come back. It took eight days for the advocate to contact me. So the only reason why I'm bringing this up is that there are a lot of frustrated retirees out there. A lot of people in their eighties or a beneficiary whose husband or wife has passed on. It's very difficult for them to make these decisions. I'm just asking that the city really put their best foot forward and try to help these retirees because there are a lot of them that are in need. And now we're getting to the point that the bills are gonna be coming in. We're gonna be getting more phone calls. And I just want to make sure that we as a community, we as a city, just make sure to take care of the retirees in their time of need. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues on council? Okay, anything from the administration? Mayor?
Yeah, certainly. I think I'll just follow up on the councilman's comments. We will never abandon our retirees. As it pertains to all resources that we can expend, we're expending all of them. If it pertains to like a prescription formulary that's been changed, that's not a decision that the city weighs in on. That's, you know, HAP or Blue Cross determining that... that the city weighs in on, that's, you know, HAP or Blue Cross determining that they no longer cover a drug, that's not because of any planned change that's happened. We are following and tracking the social media pages. We have two of our finance department and personnel benefits that are engaging with them on social media, answering questions, making personal phone calls myself as well to retirees, trying to assist in any way. If there's a provider that gives a wrong answer, that's not because the city asked that provider to give the wrong answer, it's just, you know, healthcare, obviously, is a very complicated topic, unfortunately. The terminology is a bunch of jargon, even as somebody who worked in the industry for several years. But we're going to continue to, you know, work with Blue Cross, work with HAP, work with the healthcare advocates, to make sure that they receive answers in a timely fashion, continually reach out to our, you know, manquants, make sure that they're on top of it as well. I know those conversations are ongoing at the highest of levels, through my office as well as the chief operating officer, to try to give that insurance, assurance, excuse me, to retirees. So that's one. Second, I just wanted to extend another condolences. There was a gentleman walking across, Schaefer, Warren, excuse me, this last weekend, Haji Adnan Ahmed Alabad. For those who might not know, this is a congresswoman, Rashida Tlaib's uncle. I happened to come across him during the flooding events and met him several times at the mosque, and he was a gentle giant. And so I want to extend our condolences to that family, very unfortunate circumstances. But I just want to know that they're in our thoughts and prayers. Tomorrow, there is a potential for a snow emergency. We're expecting between six to eight inches of snow. And so please, residents, keep a lookout. I think Dearborn Police has already sent out some text messages through Nixel. Our DPW team is ready to go out and salt and plow as needed. And so we're just, you know, it's Michigan weather, so sometimes they say six to eight, it ends up being one inch or two inches. And so we're monitoring closely and salt and plow as we need to go out. And lastly, tomorrow's also the state of the state. And so if anybody who wants to tune in, the governor will be delivering her speech about what her priorities will be for this upcoming legislative term. I know many people will be in attendance, I'll be up there to see what's to come and some of the budgets as well, in terms of resources that can be accessed by residents. But that's all.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you mentioning the snow. I know that I recently got a text from my wife complaining that the school's closed, so I know that that means there's a lot of snow and the kids are going to be home. So I know that a lot of people do have questions regarding snow emergency once it is called. And in the past, the main concern, and the police, I know under our chief and our leadership, our main concern is that the cars are off of the street, because there are some areas where there's not driveways, and they have to find ways to get off so that the plows can get through, and that they're not ticketed for such actions because they're trying to get their cars off the street. So I know that if, as I agree with you, we might have nothing or two inches, it could be eight.
Correct.
But if it does, I know they'll be ready.
The sirens, the messages, and social media posts will go off. And just to clarify, three inches, historically speaking, that's what declares a snow emergency. If there are three inches on the ground, that's what kicks in to have the full operation go into effect. The sirens go off, asking residents to move the cars off the roads.
Okay, I appreciate it. Just wanted to make sure for residents, I know we have enough salt, I know that's for sure. So hopefully, that will, it's going to be nice, and I'll wait for the social media posts, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from your office? Nothing? Okay, Mr. Clerk, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing from the clerk, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we will now open up to our second public comment. Is anybody here from the public wishing to speak to council retaining city business, please step forward to state your name and address for the record, and as a kind reminder, we have a three-minute limitation.
Butler, Gregory Street, Dearborn. So I was at home watching the meeting live, and there was a series of things that caused me to basically run out of my house and compelled to come here and speak. So the first of which being that you guys just voted to spend eight million dollars, and what I understood from watching the meeting was that those decisions were made by a series of meetings where you received PowerPoint presentations. Okay? So again, I hear, I heard, I don't remember if it was you or you asking about the scope of work, and you specifically asked that question, which told me that you were not aware of the full details, and you didn't have the information to sit up here and spend eight million dollars of taxpayers' money. And I'm just curious if those, the bots for eight million dollars, are those going to come out, and are they going to clean up the rats? Are they going to be patrolling the neighborhood? Are they going to be street sweeping? Because I think that my streets have been swept twice, and I'm used, and I don't know if I, we were just spoiled before, but every single Friday, our streets were swept and cleaned. I know the last blizzard we had, there was no salt, and there was no plowing on our streets, and I just want to know. And then we sat up here and said the thirteen and a half million we caught from the retirees' healthcare benefit, where did we find, forget about the eight million, take the two and a half you got from the state, there is still 5.5 million that we were able to find to upgrade our system. Most people have no problem walking into the city and pulling a permit and doing all this. I think a lot of people would rather see that money spent differently, especially considering it doesn't give us the full scope of things that we're looking for. You know, you got people stacking wood on their porches now, you got alleyways blocked with the most disgusting garbage. I've never seen the city so filthy, and I'm just going to say that. And another reason why I came is that I saw a gentleman here who says he has an IT background, and he was simply asking questions, which is his right and his duty and all of your right, and I feel like more so your duty than his to sit up there and ask these questions. And then he got berated. He got talked down to, and he's here because his mom passed away, and I don't take that lightly, because I don't have parents. My parents are deceased, and that really, really bothered me, so much so I left my eight-year-old son at home to come here and just tell you how much that really bothered me.
You have thirty seconds.
So I just, I want you guys to know that, and I really, really think you're spending our money very recklessly, very recklessly, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Anyone else from the public like to speak to the city council regarding city business? Please step forward, please.
I want to make sure that this guy over here that's sitting over here, that you guys address the issue and make sure you guys take care of him. Because what happens to him is happening to me with the police harassment stuff. I want this issue to be taken care of. I want the chief to reach out to this gentleman right here. Forget about me. He was harassed, he doesn't know how to do a FOIA, he doesn't know how to do this, he doesn't, he's lost, he doesn't know what's going on. The guy's getting harassed. Police coming, they don't give people tickets, they harass him because he's gay, you said? Come on, man, I'm not against the gay. I'm against the books, but I was never against gay people. But when this gentleman's sitting here, it really broke my heart, man, because I was talking before him, but if I see him, I'm like, this is crazy, this is outrage. This gentleman don't deserve this. Look at him. He's probably embarrassed right now because I said that. This guy's probably depressed.
Mr. On.
No, no, I'm being serious.
Mr. On, please, don't raise your voice.
Listen, please, because, don't interrupt, don't interrupt. Let me keep, don't interrupt, I'm not interrupting you.
Do not raise your voice.
Please, don't interrupt me. You can forget about me, don't worry about me and Osama Saeed, I'll take care of that on my own with the FOIAs and this and that. Worry about this gentleman that's sitting here, that came here crying for help, and you looked at him, and you guys didn't say, oh, the chief is here, or the chief came and said, can I talk to you for a minute?
Mr. On.
What do you mean, unbelievable?
Mr. On, I'm not going to tell you again. Address the body, make your statement you'd like to make, do not raise your voice.
It's not raising my voice.
Okay.
It's just heartbreaking. I don't know if you have a heart mic, but this gentleman deserves, no, let's be honest, I really feel bad for this guy.
Okay.
I'm about to go over there and ask, hey, do you want me to do a FOIA request for you? What do you want me to get information for you?
Do you have a question for us, Mr. On?
Could you help the gentleman?
Mr. On...
I'm begging you to help the gentleman. Please, that's all I ask, that's all I want. Forget about me today.
Thank you.
Help him.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from anybody in the public regarding city business? Please step forward.
I'd like to thank him for the speech he gave.
Mr. Sir, I appreciate it. You cannot speak from the floor, I've made that very clear.
I'd like to thank the gentleman.
Sir, stand up, say your name.
My name is Ali Fadl Alal, four four eight five, West Lane Street in Dearborn. I'd like to thank the gentleman for coming up and having my back on the situation, and I hope someone is going to be able to contact me regarding the situation, whether it's someone here, someone here, or someone in the back like Chief Shaheen.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other people here from the audience like to speak to the council, please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Hamud, we are adjourned.